2024 City Commission Meeting to Order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Adamchuk?
Present.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Attending.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Mayor, we have four Commissioners present. The quorum of three has been met.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in saying this Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Commissioners, as this is a special commission meeting, we do not require, we are not required to hold open public discussion on other topics beyond what is included on the agenda. Does anyone have any objections to moving right to item one? Okay. All right.
But we will have public comment on the agenda item.
We will have public comment on each of the agenda items. So far, three people have signed up to discuss item D, item C, filling the vacant City Commissioner position. If anyone would like to speak on the two items that precede that, you will have that opportunity. So the first item on the agenda is to approve agreements with Oracle in the amount of $269,255.30 annually for five years. Creole in the amount of $2,099,736. And Government Financial Officers Association in the amount of $165,000 for the acquisition and implementation of Oracle Cloud Service products. Authorize the City Clerk and the mayor to execute all necessary documents and approve the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the project financing for the new Enterprise Resource Planning System, CIP number F I 0001E.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. This is one of the reasons we called the special legislative meeting tonight to move forward and get your concurrence on this acquisition of software and implementation services for a new ERP, Enterprise Resource Planning System, or Financial Operating System would be another term to describe it. We have been using the same AS400, HTE, Financial Operating System for over 25 years as a green screen technology, limited individuals within the organization that are kind of experts in that anymore. Even the provider of the system that we have is no longer providing, you know, full service on it. So we are in need of a replacement. In 2021, we started a process with Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, who've worked with over 600 local governments across the United States in helping procure a new replacement ERP system for cities and county governments. I do want to mention on teams tonight, we do have Mike Mucha and Lakisha McCrery with GFOA who have helped us throughout this entire process, through the selection, along with the negotiation. We provided an update a little bit over a year ago. As we did the RFP, we received a handful of submittals. Actually, we did one RFP at the beginning, just received a couple of submittals. But that was when we packaged our request for proposals for a financial operating system as well as an asset management system. And that really limited the number of responses we got. So we took out the asset management portion, and we're just looking for the best of breed financial operating solution. Then we got seven submittals of, you know, a handful of qualified vendors out there. We narrowed that down to four and did demos, multi-day demos with those individuals, those vendors who came into town and showed us their system. And then we ultimately landed on Oracle. And Creole is the purchaser of the Oracle software, and they help do implementation services for local governments. So we have, over the last five months, we did, back in December, provide you that update. And the commission gave, you know, authority to begin negotiating that contract. So we've been doing that over the last five months with our partners at GFOA and our counterparts that we're going to be working with at Oracle and Creole. We provided, that first attachment was just a really good general overview of just kind of a lot of the things I've described, but then the handful of documents that if you all concur, the mayor will be signing later this evening. A lot of master services agreements and other, you know, work order purchases with Creole and Oracle to obtain the software and provide implementation services. We would be entering into a five-year contract with Oracle, and that would come at an annual fee of $269,000 annually. And then we also have a contract with Creole for $2 million, and that includes the implementation service. This is going to be over a 10-month process to transition from the system that we have to this new system with Oracle so we can be operating in a more efficient, effective way as an organization with this new software. We are also going to be kind of amending our contract with GFOA, and they're going to be helping us with implementation as well. This is going to be just a very strenuous and stressful process for staff, so we're looking to lean on GFOA to help us throughout this process as we try and implement a new financial system and continue to operate the way we are today on our existing system. So the total cost for this entire project is $3.6 million if you include the upfront implementation costs with Creole and GFOA, as well as the five-year fees that we will be incurring for the software itself. Back in February, we had a financial update with you all just related to finances in general. We gave a little bit of an update on how the year ended in 2023 and identified that our cash balance was getting near that $11 million, $10 million threshold that we didn't want to dip below. I actually brought up just one of the slides that we discussed that night, and it was related to the use of ARPA funds because we originally intended to use ARPA funds for the ERP. If you recall, we received $12 million, $12.7 million in ARPA funds. $10 million of that we were able to utilize for a revenue loss strategy, which was pretty open-ended. We were able to utilize about $5 million on operating costs, capital expenses with vehicles, equipment, technology purchases. It left a $4.7 million remaining that we were going to be using for, we were eyeing for the ERP and other technology investments that we were going to need over the next couple of years. The discussions that we did have with you all were to possibly use that remainder to, you know, help with the cash balances, and then we could debt finance what we could with the ERP purchase. And at that meeting, we had gotten general consensus from the City Commission back in February to kind of move forward with that process. So back to the financing strategy. There are some costs associated with this project that are not eligible to be debt financed. Those are non-implementation costs, like purchases of the software. There's some data conversion and training and travel associated with Creole and Oracle. We do anticipate Creole being onsite to teach us and help us implement the new software. So those are, that $700,000 would not be ARPA-eligible. So the remaining 1.8, you have the ability tonight to approve a first reading of an ordinance that would authorize us to finance this project, much like we do other debt finance projects. We could temporarily note it over the next three and a half years, and we can make a determination then if we want to use cash or permanently finance it. Other than that, I can stand for any questions. We have Rena, our Finance Director here too, and then our friends from GFOA.
So we can, going into the budget year and things look awfully tough because last year we cut a couple million dollars out of the property tax. And so to try and regroup that, we can bond this and not use the ARPA funds if we were to find ways to use those to help us with the budget procedure, right? The decision tonight will not bind us?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay. Because we, I don't know what we're going to do during the budget period.
Yeah. We could move forward with this temporary financing mechanism and then come back five months later and say, let's use cash and not permanently finance it. So it gives us that flexibility.
Jared, could you go to, I think it was the final attachment that was with this note, the summary cost? Can you just explain that a little bit, or Rena?
Sure. Pull it up and maybe blow it up there a little bit. Rena, do you want it to drive?
Yes, thank you so much, Jared. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you is just a summary of all of the costs that were reflected in the AIS, the Agenda Summary. And so the software is with Oracle, and that is a non-capitalizable cost. And so we are saying that we would pay cash for that. In 2024 is that annual amount, and then 2025 to 2028 are the other annual amounts. And then we had put in the memo that we would pay for those from the IT fund. And then each department within the city would have a share of that cost. In terms of implementation, this would be part of Creole Services. And so they have costs that we consider: implementation, training, data conversion, travel. And then, yes, those are the categories. And so of those that say cash, those are the ones that are not capitalizable, meaning we would not be able to add them to our financials and depreciate that out. And then we also wouldn't be able to finance that with temporary notes. And then the last portion of that is the GFOA Advisory Services. So those would be additional implementation services to ensure that we are meeting all of our deliverables. And so then, that total for 2024 is $2.5 million. So throughout the year and those 10 months that Jared had mentioned, we will have these deliverables and milestones, and we would have to make those payments. They're flat fixed fees. And then travel is on a reimbursement basis, so it's up to that amount. So this would be the amount pending your approval of the first reading of the ordinance that we would actually pay cash and use ARPA funds for, for 2024. And then the balance would be that we could issue temporary notes for.
Thank you. And I presume the items listed in red are there simply to highlight the difference between cash and financing? Thank you.
So if we did not choose to pay cash, we would be paying about a million dollars in, I mean, a half a million dollars in interest to do this over five years, if 4%?
So in terms of issuing temporary notes, if we did issue temporary notes, we had issued them in September or possibly December. We would issue them, this last temp note issue was about 4.6 or so percent. So it all depends on how long we actually keep the temporary notes outstanding for. One of the reasons why the temporary note amount was so high is because we had so many short-term notes being maturing in December. And so the farther you go out, the more favorable the rate would be.
Yeah, I'm just trying to point out that there's pros and cons to bonding it, pros and cons to paying for it. And I think, and during the budget period, we better weigh those.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Are these the unrestricted ARPA funds?
Yes.
Okay, so we can do whatever we want with those. Unrelated item. Do we have, I think you like having the budget, like an IT person or someone who's going to be the project manager?
We do have ERP manager in the budget. We actually have that out for recruitment. Jared could speak to where we're at with that. But that is the goal, is to have that particular individual help serve as the project manager.
Yeah, because this is going to be a big deal, and even though you're paying a bunch of consulting fees, you really do need an internal project manager to pull it off.
And we need someone with long-term expertise for all of our other systems that are going to tie into Oracle.
Another kind of operational question. So the one good thing about our current system is that it is not really connected to a lot via the Internet. Now that we will be kind of modernizing, a lot of this will be cloud-based, I'm assuming. Are we concerned with not going forward with hiring our Chief Information Officer this year that we may be kind of short some staff to help keep us safe from vulnerabilities?
So we have, our current iSeries and AS400 is backed up locally on our servers, and that'll be maintained, and we'll continue to maintain those. There's kind of pros and cons to something being on-premise or in the cloud. One of the issues that we have with the current Financial Operating System that we have is those servers are end-of-life too, and those have costs of upkeep. So in the event that we lose access to those, we don't have those backed up
Yeah.
on a separate server, whereas Oracle's a cloud-based solution that is backed up. And in the event something happens with them, they have data centers probably across the country that can get us back up and running in a quick amount of time.
Yeah.
From a staffing standpoint, though, in the IT, getting this ERP manager on is the primary thing that we are moving forward with that was budgeted in '24.
Okay.
We did plan to stand up an IT department this year. We held off on that. It'll be very much a part of the budget discussion for 2025. There are vulnerabilities, and we want to make sure we have everything in place to protect not only information within the organization, but our citizens' information.
Right.
Right now, we're comfortable with where we're at. Obviously, bringing this on, it's going to beg the question this budget season, are we going to stand it up in 2025? It's a conversation we plan to have with you all. We're going to have to look at all available resources, look at where operations are headed. But eventually, we obviously anticipated it this year. We need to further those conversations with you this summer.
Yeah. That's definitely one of those, one of those areas where saving a little bit in the short run. I don't, I don't think that this is going to happen. I know you've explained our security system to us. It sounds very good. But, you know, the more we get connected.
Yeah, of course.
And, you know, we saw what happened with, you know, EMAT or the Riley County and...
Pot County, Riley County, Kansas State, the list goes on.
Yeah. It's cheaper to prevent. And so I really want to make sure that we're staying on top of that.
Security is certainly the paramount core value of all of our IT staff, and they're very security-focused and have a good eye for that and expertise and knowledge.
Good.
So.
Yeah.
I do want to just acknowledge that our IT division is very focused in that area. And we've put those safeguards in place.
Yeah, I know. You know, we've talked about the exercises we've done with Fort Riley and stuff like that. So that, it is good that we're doing those kinds of things. And, you know, this update is going to really, hopefully, make your job a lot easier, Rena, but change operations for all of the city staff. So I think it's going to be a really good thing once we get it implemented.
Commissioners, are there any other comments? Is there anyone from the public who would like to pose any questions to staff? Seeing no one, we will close public comment on this item.
Mayor, can I say something real quick? I just want to say thank you to our leadership team for getting us to this point. Jared and Jason, Katie and Josh especially for reviewing all the documents. GFOA especially for all of their expertise. We first started this discussion in 2020. Tammy, she served as our interim Director of Finance and helped us get that agreement with GFOA formalized. It's really been a true team effort for the whole entire organization. A laborer love, never in a million years would I have thought that we would get to this point. It's been over three and a half years that it has taken us to get to this point. I'm excited for the organization and the community to be able to provide better information and data in a more timely manner as well. Thank you for allowing me to serve in this capacity after this is over. I am turning it over to Jared, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Rena, for your efforts and for recognizing the efforts of the entire team. Commissioners, is there any further discussion on this matter? Is there a motion from the commission?
I will move to approve agreements with Oracle in the amount of $269,255.30 annually for five years. Creole in the amount of $2,099,736. And the Government Finance Officers Association in the amount of $165,000 for the acquisition and implementation of Oracle Cloud Services products. Authorize the City Clerk and Mayor to execute all necessary documents and approve the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the project finance for the new Enterprise Resource Planning System.
Second.
The easy part.
Yeah.
Commissioner Opel made the motion, and Commissioner McCullough seconded the motion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchuk?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item B on the agenda to consider discussing an approach to housing policies regarding industrial revenue bonds, IRBs, workforce housing, sales tax funds, and reinvestment housing incentive districts, RHIDs. Stephanie, can you please?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Yet another workforce housing discussion item for you. I think we've made quite a bit of progress since we were here back in April. The policies that were attached in your packet, there were two drafts. I just wanted to say upfront that those were built on a variety of different sources of information, one of those being staff research. We've been talking to, well, I've been talking to a lot of my counterparts in other communities. We've looked at probably a dozen different policies that we have from jurisdictions within the state of Kansas. Of course, the feedback that you've given us over the last, I think, two, three work sessions that we've had, that's all kind of come to fruition within what you see here, as well as conversations with our bond counsel, IRBs, RHID, there's a lot of that buried in statute. They've helped us vet through that. And then lastly, the Workforce Housing Steering Committee, while their task really was more on the sales tax side of things, a lot of their comments and the discussion that we had during those meetings, it also found its way into some of the IRB policy as well. I wanted to provide just an overview of where we're headed tonight and the different topics that we're going to cover. So the first of that would be is the demand summary table that really says what those workforce housing rental rates and for-sale prices are. We do have an update on that based on 2023 income information. Then to provide you kind of a 30,000-foot view of our recommended approach to housing incentives and policies. And then we'll dive into the actual drafts of the IRB policy, the workforce housing sales tax policy, and then provide you a brief update on where we are with RHID. And then we'll wrap things up by, with a timeline, kind of talking about what those next steps might be. So here is a table you are probably very familiar with by now. We, so the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development had, excuse me, every year about this time, they come out with new income information. So just this month, we have 2024 information. But because that's kind of mid-year, what we've decided to do is use the previous year's income information. So everything that you're seeing here is based on 2023. And I've highlighted there that workforce housing range. And so if you were to compare this to the table that we've used previously, you would see that these rental rates within these bars, those have been adjusted based on what our income, really, our area median income is. Same thing with the purchase price. So when we're talking workforce housing this evening, when we say rental, it's really any rents that are between $890 and just shy of $1,900. And when we talk purchase price for owner-occupied units, that's between $158,000 and $318,000. Our intent is to update this probably towards the end of the year. We'll be bringing forth to you the numbers that we would use for the 2025 calendar year. And then just one last note on this slide. The actual unit count here that are above and below each of these bars, those are not going to be adjusted on an annual basis. That's really the work that comes from our housing market analysis, which we're hoping to do every three years. And based on that schedule, 2025 is the next time we would update that housing market analysis. So this is that 30,000-foot view I was talking about. As staff's been discussing how to kind of approach this elephant that we call housing, it really became, started to occur to us that we could break this down into kind of a simpler bites. So one of those is to establish a two- or three-year approach to housing. We would be able to, during that time period, it would really allow staff to better understand the personnel needs should we continue this longer than two or three years. It would give developers kind of a set timeframe to know that they need to get their projects in if they're wanting to utilize these incentives. And we could really just kind of assess how these programs are going, how they're working. Are we getting those desired results or outcomes? And then after that, that two or three years, we could reassess. We could figure out are there changes that we're wanting to make? Are we wanting to continue on with some of these? Most likely, the workforce housing sales tax will extend beyond this three years because we have about 10 years of allocation that we will have to spend. But during this, this three-year approach, we would hold quarterly calls for applications. This would allow for staff to really dedicate time during those application cycles to reviewing these, to processing them, drafting development agreements. And that way, it's not just this kind of revolving door, and we don't know what that workload might be. I think the biggest aspect, and you'll hear me reference it several times tonight, I will sound like a broken record by the end of this, is that the more that we dive into some of these policies and programs and talk to our peer communities, they've all heavily relied on external experts to help guide them through this process. And we really do this somewhat today. So for IRBs, we rely on our bond counsel to draft the resolutions, to help us through that process. But what we're proposing here is to hire two external resources we already work with quite often. That would be our bond counsel and then also our financial advisors. I spoke with both of them. They do this throughout the state. They actually contract with jurisdictions to help them through this process. The, we'll discuss more, but RHID is incredibly complex and convoluted, and a lot of it is held within statute. And the more I talk to other jurisdictions, the more I realize there is just no one approach. We really need to, we need help guidance through that process and that program. But having these experts come on board, it would, they could help us develop these policies and really to understand best practices. Since they see this throughout the state, they kind of know what's working and what's not. And we've had some informal conversations with them, and they've already given us that feedback. They would also be able to help us during this interim period review applications to kind of get kind of the flow of things to really understand what to look for, what we need to be, what we need to be considering as part of those reviews. And then also drafting development agreements. There's other communities that are using their bond counsel to help draft those agreements that are going to be needed throughout all of these programs. And then the last one is really just assistance monitoring and the implementation of these. There's quite a few times that we're going to send back to you the question, how do you want us to monitor this? How much time do you want us to spend monitoring? I think these are all things that those experts that are seeing this every day, they could really help us to define that. And then lastly, as I already kind of mentioned, at the end of the three years, we'd go back, we'd reevaluate, we'd bring to your report, this is how many units we did. This is, these are how many projects we funded under these programs. And it just gives us kind of a better timeframe to really understand what staff resources And it just gives us a kind of a better timeframe to really understand what staff resources we would need if we were to continue these. I will pause there and see if there's any initial feedback kind of on this approach. If not, I can keep going and we can always revisit it at the end.
Yeah, so the external partners are, do they have recommendations for things like, you know, we've talked about, you know, do we allow for some units in a development to be above the workforce? Do they have recommendations for how that has worked and not worked in the past?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's one of the really, with RHID, no matter what, we will have to engage with our bond counsel at some point because what they'll do is they'll actually provide us a worksheet to work through to make sure that we're generating enough revenue to pay back whatever it is the RHID is paying for, to make sure that we're generating enough to pay that back. And so it really, it evaluates the city's risk in that scenario. They're also the ones that have really, I feel like, kind of set us straight on what RHID should be or how it should be structured. Again, there's, I don't know, 20 different communities in the state doing RHID. They all do it a little bit different. Bond counsel's been incredibly helpful there.
Okay. Are we going to get into some of those details later?
We can, a little bit.
Okay.
A lot of it is still a question mark.
Okay. Yeah, I know that it's, we have an RHID part of the presentation, so I just wasn't sure how detailed we were going to get, so. Okay.
It's up to you.
We'll get there.
Okay.
Stephanie, I just would like to say, I do appreciate, and I think it's good sense to establish this as a test period, if you will. This is new territory for us. I wouldn't want to get too locked into some very rigid constraints that we would not be able to modify readily. So I really, I think this is a good way to go.
Okay. Continue on. Some of this is a little bit of repeat from last time, but just as a reminder, for IRBs for residential purposes, there's two ways in which they can be used. One is a sales tax exemption on the construction materials. The second is a property tax abatement where you can abate a percentage of the property tax increment for a period of up to 10 years. And just as a reminder, this is for rental projects only. It's because IRBs are typically used for commercial projects and rentals are considered a commercial, commercially-held property. With each of the draft policies, there was an objective at the very beginning. And that was really to clearly state out what the intent of that policy is for. These are just a recommendation right now, again, from that compiling all those different resources that we used. And so for the sales tax exemption, the way that it's written right now is that it would be to encourage rental housing for all income ranges, not just that workforce range. And there's a couple of different reasons why we are kind of recommending going in that direction. One, our demand summary shows that we need rentals across the entire spectrum, not just with that rental range. Second, this would incorporate LITC, the low-income housing tax credit projects that we just, that you approved a couple weeks ago now. LITC could be wrapped into the sales tax exemption policy. There's really minimal processing or oversight that's required for the sales tax exemption. It's a pretty easy, you just went through it again with the LITC. It's a pretty easy process where the applicant works with bond counsel. They draft a resolution, we bring it to you. And then at the end of the project, you certify that, that sales tax exemption. There's, there's no other monitoring after that. And then kind of in that same vein, by including all rental units, there wouldn't have to be any long-term monitoring. So we would be able to allocate our staff resources in other areas versus having to track down if 10 years after a project are the, is a sales tax exemption that you awarded, is it still for, for rental units, is it still for workforce housing units? So that's how we, and then the other aspect of that is there's no guarantee that those materials would have even been bought in the city of Manhattan or that we would have received revenue from that. So it's really a minimal financial risk for the city to, to issue a sales tax exemption for all units. So the second aspect here is for the property tax abatement. This would just encourage workforce housing projects that, and the kind of the second component of that is utilizing existing infrastructure. So for the abatement, it wouldn't be for all rental units, it would be within that workforce range.
Stephanie?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I probably missed it, but how did we come up with $1,900?
Sure, so.
That's over there. Because today in the Kansas City Star, they talked about the, the average, the range was $1,200 in the Kansas City area, I mean, $1,900.
It is quite a lot. So what, I actually did this quick, I assumed one of you would ask this. So I, what HUD usually says is you should spend no more than 30% of your take-home pay on rent. And so we did a calculation. If you were to take this $55,000 a year and you were to divide that by 12 months and then times that by the 30%, that would actually be $1,375 a month. So that is even, that's, that's $400 more than what this 890 is. And so even HUD's methodology that they've suggested, we felt like it was a little flawed. And so we came up with our, kind of our own internal assessment to, to be able to calculate this. I can, it's all buried in a spreadsheet that has lots of different calculations that we did. But we felt that it was more true to the actual rental rates than what that, that general 30% of your take-home pay should be.
So would we use that calculation or HUD's calculation?
So that is, this is based on HUD's numbers. But we think that using HUD's general standard of 30% of one's annual income.
It's a little, it's a little outrageous.
It is. And so that's where, this is all based on HUD data. We went to HUD's website, we pulled that down. It's just a different methodology than what they were recommending.
But for our evaluation and our limits, will we use HUD's or will we use our own?
This is our own. This is taking HUD's data and doing a different formula to make it our own.
Okay, so that, even this is like high.
Well, so if we, I can go pull it out of my notebook, I carry it around with me. The one from 2022, the table that, that this is from, our area median income increased from $77,000 in 2021 to $100,000 in 2023. So $30,000 jump, yes, according to HUD. And so these rental rates, again, if we were to, to do kind of like an apples-to-apples comparison, these are much lower than what it would have been based on our methodology from 2021, using our area median income.
Okay, but, so that, so that $1,900 is our max, is what our max limit is going to be, or what you're recommending?
We, we can revise that. We agree that that is a little, that's a little high. But again, we didn't want to manipulate the numbers to make that upper end smaller. But this is, the methodology here, or the, I should say, the numbers here are in line with what our housing market analysis and the consultants we hired to do that. It's in line with, with how they came up with this as well.
You could provide direction on the purchase price to stay at 120%, but go to 80 or 100% on the rental rate.
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to you all to set that.
Yeah, because I'm just, I mean, spending a third of your income on rent doesn't leave a lot for anything else. And yeah, that just doesn't, doesn't really seem feasible for, for most people. And I mean, that really makes this, I mean, a $1,900 house. I mean, we do have workforce that could afford that, depending on how we want to define workforce. So that's kind of going to be another one of our conversations, is that how we're going to define this again.
Think they assume three-bedroom as well?
We did not account for bedrooms here. HUD does break it down by bedroom, again, for the monitoring part of it. Originally, we, we did, or it was actually based on a four-person household. And they do break it down by bedrooms. The monitoring of that is, would get, it would get outlandish.
Right.
Trying to just keep up with it.
So I think, yeah, just whatever method we use, it just needs to be very clear. You know, and we can't just throw, throw numbers out there for, for any reason, but. And that's, you know, one benefit to using HUD is, well, oh, it's HUD's number, we didn't come up with it, somebody else came up with it. But is that something that we want to accept? So that's just something we'll have to consider.
I did just say, being at some of these housing meetings, we debated this 30%. And we got one reaction, like the applause there, but then from some of the developers, we said, that number's got to be higher. In order, in order to build the house and that people want to move in, because they can build a house for that price, but that's not what people want. But we've got some people in the audience, I think, can give us some.
Please hold your comments until the public comment opportunity. Thank you.
So maybe instead of really zeroing in on, on the $2,000 a month that somebody's going to pay, maybe we should lower the total income of the people we're trying to build houses for. You see what I'm saying? That wouldn't.
To go below 60% AMI?
I can afford $2,000 a month in housing. That's, that's pretty, you know. Wouldn't it be better to sort of, what we're trying to do is workforce housing, bring people in, people who are making, you know, hopefully more than the minimum wage in Kansas, which is awful. But how do we, how do we really zero in on those people and help them with housing?
I would be reluctant to start doing that. I think we need a framework that is recognized nationwide. This is a fairly broad band of income, ranging from $55,000 to $108,000. We can get into all kinds of philosophical discussions about the nature of poverty in Manhattan, Kansas, but that's not going to help us with encouraging development. You know, I think we do have to recognize, as John pointed out, that there is a cost to construction and to generating, getting these properties onto the market.
We can go back and we can look at, again, how some other communities are calculating those rental, those corresponding rental rates compared to how we were doing it. I know they'll use HUD data because we get area median income. That's what CDBG is based off of, a lot of those programs. The, the subsidized housing, that also uses that area median income guideline. So I think that, just for your reference, the way that the state defines workforce housing is actually 60% AMI, up to 150%. But the way that they calculate those monthly rental rates may be a little bit different than how we're approaching it. So we can go back and we can come up with a couple of different other methodologies and, and bring that and see if that's more in line with what you were all thinking. Does that work? Okay, so for the sales tax exemption, I'm just going to kind of walk you through the process that was outlined in that policy. There are two basic requirements that a project would have to meet in order to apply. One, it has to have a net gain of two or more units. Really, what we've kind of heard right now is that the focus of these programs should be on increasing our supply, not just replacing what we have. Although I know that there is some, some of the, the condition of units is challenging, but right now it's about getting more units within the community. And then the second of those is that the applicant has to own or have a purchase agreement for the property. If, so the, an applicant would submit their preliminary application and a, and a fee. Again, we would like our financial advisors to provide us an idea of what that fee should be. Staff would review that application for basic requirements. Again, are they generating two or more units? And do they, are they authorized to, to be entering into agreement for that property? And then we would work with our bond counsel to draft a resolution of intent. That resolution would come before you, and then you would take action on it. Very similar to how the LITC process worked. Now, that is assuming that you are wanting to consider any rental housing project within the city limits. And that's what is reflected here. If you want to try to limit that, then we would have to create, just, we'd have to revise this process a little bit. When we get to the property tax abatement, that, that has a couple of additional steps. So again, the same basic two requirements. And then what we have suggested, or what we've included in that policy, is that we also have these desirable project, project criteria. One of those would be that the projects located within what we're calling a residential IRB redevelopment zone. That's what this map shows. And this map was generated based on several different layers of data. One of those is based on the potential number of new housing units. That's, that's because of zoning. So in this map, there are no single-family zoning districts that are included because they can't have a net gain of two or more units, they are limited to one. Additionally, we looked at owner versus rental occupancy. A majority of the area that you see here is, is rental occupied. And then lastly, we looked at the adjacency to both Aggieville and downtown. We've done a lot of investment of public infrastructure, there's been a lot of private investment in these areas. And the more housing units we can get nearby those commercial districts, the better off they're going to be. And I wanted to say that, so we use Salina kind of as our, our peer community. They're a little bit further ahead on the, the housing conversation than we are. They have a similar type of geographical limitation on when they use RHID and IRBs. And so that kind of is reflected within this map. And then the second criteria would be that only the workforce housing units would qualify for the abatement. So I just gave a really quick example. If we had a vacant lot and somebody came in to put two units on it, we'll say it's a twin home. The, so one of those units is workforce, one of them is not. The total property tax that that, that owner is paying, we'll say, is $4,200 a year. Before they developed the site, the base ad valorem was only $200. And so then the increment from the improvement is $4,000. Well, because one of those units is not workforce housing, it would not qualify for the abatement. So the max abatement that they could receive is only $2,000. That's what that criteria means. So they would go through the same basic application process. We would make sure that they are within that zone. We would also make sure that they are, that they're only asking for the workforce housing component. If they meet all those requirements, then we would invite them to proceed to a formal application. Part of that formal application would include, potentially, if, if this is kind of the direction the commission is wanting us to go, would include a set of criteria that the applicant would self-score themselves on, as well as provide a narrative for each of these points. I don't know if there were any specific questions on any of these. I can certainly run through them to let you know what we were thinking. I, I don't want to, to bore you with those either, though. So I, it's really whatever you are interested in. There's a couple that I, I thought I would just point out. One of them is this project includes 18 or more units. The number 18 was selected because that's the breakpoint between RM and RH. Anything over 18 units would have to be in the RH zoning district, so that's where that number came from. And the other one was, oh, so the rental, if rental, if 50% or more of your units or of a developer's units were with rents below the 80% AMI, they would receive additional points. Again, kind of targeting that more middle range and not having all of our workforce housing units be at that $1,900 a month. Any other of these that you had questions on?
How, how did you kind of go through and, I mean, these, how did you prioritize these and, and, and give them the, the potential score?
Sure.
What was your process for that?
Yeah, so this was definitely a group effort by several individuals within community development. Some of this, we looked at other communities, our peer communities. But like for this number one, we spent a lot of time and energy in our, our vision for Aggieville, on our Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan. We wanted to make sure that if we're truly incentivizing a project to happen, and it's within one of those districts, that it is, it's fulfilling the vision of that plan. And some other of these are based on what the objective is of getting additional workforce housing units and utilizing existing infrastructure. That was a big one. So if there's, and when we look at Aggieville and we look at downtown, a lot of these criteria are kind of projects that we've seen interest from the community over the years. So that, that was kind of the intent. If there was any that you want us to restructure or reprioritize for points, we certainly can.
I think they're good, and you know, kind of connecting that to these vision documents that we have, that we've spent a lot of time and effort on, I think is really, actually, it makes a lot more sense when you, when you bring that up, that we would give that a higher score, so that we do try and incentivize those.
Yeah, the other one, so number two here, goes back to just trying to increase our property tax base. So if there is a, a lot that's been sitting there vacant for five or more years, or it's currently a parking lot, it's not generating a whole lot of property tax for us. So if we can incentivize a project there, we could even further return back from, from that investment. And so that's another way that we tried to look at this.
Stephanie, I would just suggest rewording item number four. I had to read it a couple of times, it makes it sound as if. I, I know what you're trying to get at there with the, but.
Better way to say it?
Yeah.
Sure. Yep, we can, we can work on that. So the total points possible are 28. The way that we have this structured right now, again, this is looking at Derby. Um, the way that we have this structured right now, um, again, this is looking at Derby, Salina, and how they approach this. So if your project were to receive eighteen or more points, then you could have that full ten-year abatement, um, and a hundred percent of the new property taxes or the increment. And then it just kind of staggers, um, uh, down from there. Um, I think the biggest one is here, oh, and so this actually should, I think, oh yeah, this slide didn't get updated, I don't think. So the, the biggest question then is if a project's scoring from zero to nine points, are we comfortable saying, I'm sorry, you don't meet enough of these criteria? This isn't the type of project we're looking for? And you, um, you know, we would say, go back, revise your proposal and bring us something else that scores a little bit higher. Um, that's the way it's structured now. We certainly don't have to, uh, but that would be something for your consideration.
I think that definitely makes sense. It's the whole point of having a, a scale, uh, to use in developing these, in evaluating the projects.
Okay.
Question, just to refresh my memory, this property tax abatement for industrial revenue bonds, is that all tax entities?
It is.
Okay.
How hard will it be to get to eighteen points?
I, we spend a lot of time doing these like fake scenario, development scenarios to go through this. You really have to have at least half of these. But again, you're providing an incentive for a product. And so that's a question back to you all. Do you want to, do you want to allow something that scores lower to receive this incentive? And to receive that property tax abatement?
I think it should be a high goal.
Okay.
I, personally, I don't think that the majority of these projects, unless if we have developers that are jumping through the roof to, to do that, I think it should be a difficult, uh, metric to meet to get that a hundred percent tax abatement.
I think this goes back to your very first slide as well, Stephanie, that, um, if we do this and realize after the first three rounds of applications that they're all coming in below our target, that we either need to revise the scale, have a ex parte meeting with some of the developers in town to say where, where is the, the holdup? But I think if we think of this as a, a living process for the next two or three years, we can grow into, um, a robust system that we can continue into the future.
Absolutely. Yes, we can come back and revisit this if we're, if we're finding that it's too hard to meet that eighteen points needed.
Yeah, it should be doable, but.
Not impossible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stephanie, um, I probably missed when you told us about this, but do we encourage developers at all to have sort of mixed use? I mean, I know that the development in Aggieville, um, it would have been great if there'd been some low-income apartments involved in that so people who work in Aggieville could live in Aggieville, you know? How do we, how do we grade it if they're, you know, they're building thirty units and six of them are low-income? Does that, does that work with our?
That would be, so if we're talking about mixed use as far as residential rates, the property tax abatement component here is only structured for, right now, for the workforce range. If you're also wanting to provide a property tax abatement for lower-income, um, units, we can certainly revise the policy to reflect that.
Okay.
If we're talking mixed use as far as a commercial and a residential project, I am going to talk about that, I think, in two slides, maybe three, on a recommendation of how we can, how we could, uh, approach that.
And just, just to clarify, Commissioner, the TIF districts and IRB property tax abatements can't coincide. So there, there are other incentives, though. I mean, that even the sales tax exemption on construction or the workforce housing tax credits could have been, or tax, uh, incentives could have been used. But if you over, you just can't, it's the same revenue stream. And the TIF already has it captured and pledged towards projects.
And same with RHID. RHID, TIF, IRB, property tax payment, all use the same revenue source. Um, so same thing here with property tax abatement. They are, so the formal application process is they would submit to us that formal application along with their self, um, self-scored criteria. Uh, we have a kind of a city review team that would meet to walk through those applications, and then we would provide a recommended term and funding level to the city commission for your review and potential approval. Um, part of that process would include a development agreement. That's where the terms of that, uh, of this funding source or that incentive would be laid out. So that would be something to consider. Um, I mentioned just, mentioned this kind of at the beginning. The monitoring is where we're kind of stuck of how we should approach this and how much resource and time you want us to spend in doing so. For, for the IRBs, that's already kind of laid out because we, we currently have IRBs through commercial industrial properties. So the property owner would provide us rental rates at the end of the each fiscal year, and we would go and make sure that those rental rates are in agreement with their development agreement. And then, um, the city staff end up certifying that, excuse me, to the county that all requirements of that development agreement are met. So then those taxes are abated. Um, one of the questions that, again, I think our bond counsel and our, uh, financial advisors could help us with is what do we do if there are unmet performance standards? Um, if they say that they're gonna have fifty percent of their units workforce and only forty percent of them end up that way, uh, what is our, our recourse at that point? Um, if they ended up hi, having higher rental rates than what they originally suggested, um, is that something, you know, how do we pursue that? Is that something that we want to pursue? Because again, they're getting points based on what, you know, what they're proposing as part of their development. If they fall short, they originally had eighteen points, then when it actually was constructed, they're more in this range, we would have to go back and revise that, that agreement, um, to give them lesser abatement. And I assume, is that something that we're comfortable with? Okay. Uh, some feedback that we're looking for, um, specifically, uh, from you all this evening is one, the sales tax exemption. Are we comfortable with the eligibility being all rental housing units? Do we want to limit that geographically? Or are we wanting to open it up to any rental project within the city limits? For tax abatement, um, the, the IRB map that I showed you, is that a direction that we want to continue to go? I, uh, are we wanting to limit that just to workforce? Are we wanting to include low-income housing, um, as part of that? So anything sixty percent AMI or below? Are there, we kind of already talked about the, the criteria and, and y'all provided some, some feedback there. Is that the type of projects that we're trying to support? And it kind of sounds like maybe we go through those criteria a couple of rounds, see if those are the projects we're really looking for. And if not, we can go back and revise that. Um, and then I would offer up that there's other ways that we can approach this as well. If this is just not sitting well with you and you're like, I still don't like it, um, there's other, other ways we can do this. Uh, we can continue to do some research. Our, our, uh, outside experts, they might have some ideas, um, on what to bring to the table there as well. And then, so this is, um, Commissioner McCullough, uh, you asked about kind of those mixed-use developments. Um, we, if we had, uh, bond counsel and our, our financial advisors, um, come on board to kind of help us through this initial stint, we have an opportunity to combine our housing policy with our ECO DEVO policy. ECO DEVO is the commercial industrial part. It does reference LIHTC. The residential IRB policy is now separate. If we combine those together, then we can actually evaluate mixed-use development as, under one policy versus under two separate ones. Um, the other aspect of that, let me get caught up here, is that this is actually identified in two of our, um, initiatives within our strategic plan. So initiative one point one-two, um, to develop a plan for the ECO DEVO relief and recovery sales tax, which we are doing with that workforce housing sales tax policy. And then also five point six, evaluating the use of ECO DEVO incentives, tools, and funds. Um, so we would be able to go ahead and open up our, our existing IRB policy and combine those should the commission, uh, want to go that direction, uh, and take advantage of that opportunity. And then again, um, I think that those consultants can help us, uh, figure out how to work into our development agreements, what happens if you don't meet your performance standards. Any feedback there that you want to give right now? Or do we, we can also do that at the end?
I'd say I'd use, you know, geographical limits, just like how you had it, where the zoning, as long as the zoning fits.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for clarification from you on the tax abatement port, portion, or also on sales tax exemption?
All of it.
So include, for the sales tax exemption, also have that applied to that IRB map?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on the limit to workforce housing, I would say it'd open up to all of it. I mean, we just passed one for low-income. Housing, and we need all housing types in there.
We're talking about the sales tax exemption?
There's, there's, there's really kind of two different incentives here, though.
Yeah.
So I kind of think, personally, the, the sales tax exemption, I don't know that we really want to limit that since we do need rentals across the entire city. And it's a pretty low risk for us financially, um, since, you know, they're not gonna buy all of their, most of their materials in Manhattan. Um, so we don't really lose out on that. Um, and I think we, we do still want to try and incentivize building, uh, you know, even on the, on the edges of town. I really like the IRB map for the tax abatement, though. Um, I think it's a good kind of, it's, it's a targeted area, but it's still pretty broad. And not having to do, deal with the, um, challenges of zoning. Um, I think it's a good, a good target for that. And then with, with the, the housing, I mean, if they want, if, if the developer wants to go lower, I don't think we have any reason to tell them, no, you, you, you have to charge more rent to get this incentive. We want to incentivize whatever we can, so, um, if we can make that happen, then yeah, sure, let's go lower.
But do we want, we don't, do we want to go higher? Do we want to look at high-end condos or?
No.
Rentals?
Not particularly.
So I think that needs to be made clear that it's not all rental housing.
Okay, so for the sales tax exemption, it would be what you're suggesting? It would be a hundred and twenty percent AMI or below? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say. I don't know about.
I would, I'd still do it for all of it, but.
You still would want it for all rental units? Okay.
And I think, John, were you saying that for the sales tax exemption, you would, um, support it being citywide or you?
Citywide within where we, where we can build it, obviously.
Right, okay.
So.
Because I think in the, within that mirror, the map area that you showed, there's not a whole lot of opportunities for very high-dense or multi-unit instruction, is there?
There is. Um, that, the, the map that I included, so that would be anything that's zoned RLA, RM, RH, and then also, um, the downtown area, it has, um, it allows for actually quite dense residential development as well. Um, so like the, the hole here, that wasn't included, even though it is a high percentage of rental units there. Um, it's because it's zoned RL. And then some of these, uh, these, um, areas kind of outside of this, they're also zoned RL, so we just can't achieve that two net units. But yeah, these, these are kind of primary areas where we already have zoning in place to support, uh, more than two units of rental housing.
And a lot of those are probably already multifamily anyways, right?
Yes.
We're not really changing the, the character of an incentive by doing this.
Yeah, specifically in this kind of donut right here, we looked at, um, even though it's zoned single-family, we looked at the number of units within each of those structures and, and a majority of them have two or more units already. They're just considered non-conforming because they were legally conforming at one time and then it was rezoned or downzoned to RL. So yes, a lot of them already have multi-units there.
In general, I'm good with your criteria, but I'm interested in feedback of what we get.
Sure.
Regarding the different points.
Okay. Uh, let's see. And then I will kind of mention this again. Um, the opportunity for us to look into our commercial IRB policy and combine that with our residential. So we can use one policy to evaluate projects that are multifaceted.
I think I'd like you to come back and to let us know what that looks like.
Sure.
You know, where is there overlap between the two policies? Where are they complementary?
So I, for the tax abatement, we're gonna, we, we talked about doing the quarterly calls. And I, I like that. I think it provides everyone with some consistency. Would it be the same for the sales tax exemption, though?
That's a great point. Um, we were, uh, I think our approach originally was everything would be quarterly.
Okay.
But the sales tax exemption, because those are pretty easy, um, and it takes minimal staff time, we could just have that as an open call whenever there's a project available. I'll look to Jason, he, to see if he has thoughts on that.
You've obviously entertained a non-residential application recently with the Wareham project. There's, there's another one out there that is non-residential that we're, we're aware of. We need to get you all aware of that and see if that's the direction you want to go. You'll have a lot of these. And, and if it's to the point where, from a residential standpoint, you're willing to entertain any and all comers from a sales tax perspective, we could package those up once a month and bring them forward. If it's, we, you know, if there's a discretion, like this is the max we want to go by way of value or rental rates, then we're gonna have a little bit more detail needed from the developer before we approach you all. There also will have to be some sort of agreement if we do have max rents established, whether that's eighty percent, a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent. They can put what they want on paper. There's gonna have to be something that holds them accountable to do that because all these things are front-loaded. You, you pass a resolution for IRB sales tax exemption before they even start, before they even pull the building permit. They basically filed an application and said that's what they're going to do. So that will trigger something in the event we do cap and we're holding those developers and builders accountable.
If we, if we have more IRBs than we can deal with, that's probably a good problem. Uh, and then, you know, we can, we could evaluate doing it more on a more periodic basis.
Yep.
Okay, any, we're gonna move on to the workforce housing sales tax unless you had any additional thoughts right now on IRBs. We can always come back. So the workforce housing sales tax, a lot of what you're going to see here, um, was helped, developed by our workforce housing steering committee. I believe in your packet, there was their summary of recommendations. Really, the, the back page, um, the funding allocation framework is where, what we're putting forth, where that originated. Um, so the objective of this was to encourage a variety of different housing types within the community, within that defined workforce range, and then with preference given to projects that utilize existing public infrastructure. Based on that objective, um, the basic requirements that an application would have to meet to move toward, uh, to a formal application, the first two are the same as previous, the, all the units, uh, or at least the units that are receiving that sales tax are within that workforce housing range, and that, um, for this one, that the site is properly zoned, um, before the application is received. If we move forward with having that, that map for the tax abatement, we don't have to worry about zoning because that, that site should already have proper zoning to accommodate that development. Same application process, uh, we would, staff would review to make sure it's meeting all four of those criteria. If it does, then we would ask them to proceed to that, to that formal application. For the workforce housing sales tax, because we have limited funding over the next ten years, it, staff's proposing that we have a funding limitation set for each of those projects. Um, I won't read this to you, you all are, are capable of that, but I did want to kind of break down what this might mean if we were to, to move forward with what is shown here. Certainly can talk about, um, altering, or these amounts. So if we were to do the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars max per project, um, over ten years, that would generate maybe thirty-two projects if they were asking for the full, um, quarter, quarter million. That would also generate three-hundred-and-twenty units, if each of them did ten units under that project. To give you a sense of breaking that down year by year, that would equate to around three projects a year and about thirty-two units a year. So just that, to kind of, um, set the foundation of if you wanted to bump that higher, if you wanted to make it lower, that just gives you a general sense of what you could get from this. With, um, projects that are within a, a TIF, um, this is, uh, the sales tax exemption and the workforce housing sales tax are the only two tools that would work alongside a TIF. So we wanted to further incentivize for redevelopment to occur in those TIF districts that we've established. If the sooner or the quicker that redevelopment happens, the more that we get to put back in the coffers of the TIF. And so we, we end up benefiting from that as well. So that's why we wanted to throw out the idea of maybe adding an additional incentive if a project were in that district. Same criteria that were with the IRB. The only one that was different is, where is it? This number four, that the project, the project is utilizing existing public infrastructure, meaning that there is no new infrastructure that needed to be extended to serve that project. The reason that it didn't need to be included with the IRB is because we have a map, and that is surrounded by existing infrastructure, so we weren't on the fringe of the community. And Mayor, I will revise number five on this one to make it more clear of, of what that one is trying to say.
I have a question about that public infrastructure thing.
Sure.
So, yeah, a lot of those lots are surrounded by existing public infrastructure. But what if they're building, you know, a, a six-unit condo that needs to have the sprinklers and stuff like that? I know we've had challenges with that in the past where the water lines aren't wide, aren't big enough to get the water pressure. Is that something that we want to consider?
So that wouldn't be new infrastructure, we would just consider that upsizing of what we already have there. And in some cases, that actually could also meet this number eight, where we receive that benefit. If we need to have a, a larger, say, storm pipe, and the project allows for us to do that, they may end up getting additional points under number eight, because that improvement we've already identified as a need.
Okay, so because they're tearing up the lot, we can get in there and do our utilities work without having to have an extra cost? Okay.
Yeah.
Sewer, sewer capacity is probably our biggest challenge in the map area. Even when we analyzed Aggieville, we recognized more density, certain uses could challenge our sewer capacity. We know we have stormwater projects that will intersect and go both east and south out of Aggieville eventually, or around the Aggieville area. But those are opportunities as well to look at all your existing infrastructure and, and upgrade at that point.
Okay.
So the only criteria that the workforce housing steering committee had identified that we did not have included here, but we certainly could, was that receiving extra points if you were to leverage other sources. So if you're within a TIF, if you're receiving an IRB, if you're part of an RHID, that, that's something that we could include. We, we didn't, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then the points breakdown, on this one, there, there were more points that were possible because there was that extra criteria added in there. And so the way this would work is that if you score at least half the points, you would receive that maximum benefit, and then it stair steps down from there. Anything less than five points would not be recommended for workforce housing sales tax funds. We're a little bit more generous on if your project gets awarded under this one, because it's not property tax and an existing tax that we would receive. And this sales tax was solely dedicated to, to workforce housing projects. So the formal application process, very similar to the IRB. We would work with, we would recommend a funding level to the city commission, make sure that you're in concurrence, and then likely come back with you, or come back to you with a development agreement that clearly spells out the terms of that agreement. Some, you might hear this this evening, we've, we've heard it as staff. There's some questions about whether the commission would be willing to have retroactive awards. So if there's a project already underway and it's within that workforce housing range, would you be willing to consider going back after the fact and further incentivizing that, that development? And then again, if we were to have Baker Tilly and Gilmore and Bell help us coming up with that monitoring period, it sounds like we, if we're limiting the IRB sales tax exemption to a hundred and twenty percent AMI or below, that's something we're gonna have to work with them on, on how we monitor that and create a development agreement. And then the same things we talked about with IRB, with the payback clauses, if one of the requirements or conditions isn't met. If you're ready to dive into RHID, we have like four more slides. So this is all a regurgitation of what I've already shared, but just as an example, or just as a reminder, RHID is basically a residential TIF. It captures the incremental gain in property tax for a period of up to twenty-five years, and it can be used to finance public infrastructure, private infrastructure, and even the construction of, of homes, the vertical construction. The RHID process is really clearly outlined in state statute, has really, has seven steps. The first one, we've already done, we have our ma- ma- housing market analysis. And then steps two and three, well, actually one through three, those are really just a technicality of, of following state statute. So resolution number one says we have a housing issue, this project is going to address the, the needs that our housing market analysis says. And then we send that to the Kansas Department of Commerce, and they say, yep, this project is going to help meet the, the demand summary table. You'll see here that number seven, that veto that the county and the school district receive, I have met, or we have met with both the county and the school, the school board now. And really, the, the consensus there was they wanted to focus on the workforce housing as part of RHID. So what that means, if it's a hundred percent of all those homes have to be within that workforce range, or if it's, you know, we're only willing to, i- i- if it's fifty percent, at least have to be within that workforce range, that really wasn't determined. I think a lot of that is going to be based on the performance of that specific development and how much revenue it can generate. But what they had asked is, at least early on in the process, come before them and say, here's what we're trying to do, or that this developer wants to do, are you okay with this? Rather than going through this entire process and then them vetoing it at the end. So that was really the biggest takeaway, is just kind of work them in at the, the front end of the process. Number four here, the development plan, that is really where we need to have a policy in place to direct the terms of that agreement. And, and that's kind of, everything right here, we, we could do that very soon. It's when we start to get to this development plan that we're going to need a lot of guidance, especially the financial mechanisms that RHID allows. That's where we're kind of hitting a roadblock right now. So there's three types of RHIDs that we're considering. All of these, we've talked with our bond counsel about, kind of at a, a very high level. One of, the first one here is infill. Because IRBs are limited to rental units, this is an opportunity to have a similar type of program for, for owner occupied. And we can actually help assist with the vertical construction if one of two conditions exist. One, the infrastructure in front of that lot is more than ten years old, or if the property, the project, property is already included in a benefit district. And really what this does is it helps to encourage the redevelopment of underutilized parcels. So parcels that we're not getting the property tax benefit from right now, we can incentivize a development. The greenfield, that's the one that most closely resembles what we do currently with benefit districts. It is a different process, it has a different financial process that we would have to go through, but it would use the property taxes generated by this RHID to pay for, for infrastructure, or what we call today specials. And then the last one is, we would be able to use an RHID to pay off any existing specials on a lot that currently does not have a structure. That is all I had on RHID right now. I think the next slide kind of introduces us into a recommendation of, of where we could go from here. So under each of these, these are broken down by the different policies. You'll see that we have already started the policy development on these first two. It would be great if we could have our bond counsel and our financial advisors come in and take a look to see if there's any revisions they would recommend based on best practices, and really just to give us a solid foundation moving forward. But when we get it down here to RHID, on the infill and the greenfield components, that's really where we need their expertise. We, it is just, as I mentioned, it is so complex. It is an entirely different animal than what we're used to with benefit districts or IRBs or any other tool, that we need to have that, that outside expertise come in and get us started. If we get to a, a point where the commission is comfortable with our IRB policy and our workforce housing sales tax policy, we could try to push to have our first call for applications potentially in October. That's assuming that, that we continue to make a regular process and, or progress and really refine this down. If not, what we're shooting for is a January twenty twenty-five application date, where we would open it up for all of the programs that you see here, and allow developers to come forth. The last thing that I would add is for the land use and zoning policy component, is that very last section. We are, we, community development, are willing to have the conversation of, of zoning and land use with you at any time. Ben Schimmel, our, our long-range senior planner, he's already kind of starting to come up with a roadmap for how to, to discuss that with you all, recognizing that there's certain zoning changes that would have to happen in order to achieve some of the things that you all have mentioned previously throughout work sessions. So I know you have a lot coming up with budget and city manager, so we don't want to pressure you at all, but whenever you're ready to start that conversation, we can get something on your calendar.
Stephanie, I think at some point, we need to have a really serious discussion about TIFs. I think perhaps we, they're overused in Manhattan. And, you know, the, the problem is, you, you dedicate that whole tax to one, one issue, and the schools and the county don't receive their part of the tax that they would have normally. And then they're just forced, because they have costs, to up their property tax levy. So it's sort of, to me, unfair to the, the greater good. I know why we use them, and I know in many cases, they have been very effective. But I just think at some point, after the budget or something, we should all sit down and talk about what exactly is happening, you know, across the board with, with a TIF which takes all the tax money and just gives it to one area, forcing perhaps other taxing entities to raise their taxes.
Okay.
Ms. Nurse, any other comments?
So, okay. The consultant on the RHID, what are we looking for out of scope for that? They're, they're just gonna develop an entire policy for us to use RHID that will be economically incentivized for developers?
Yeah, so what they've done other places is that they will actually come in, and because RHID is so set in statute, and there are certain processes, and there are certain things you can or cannot do, they would make sure that whatever our process or policy is, abides by those statutes.
Okay.
And I think that's the biggest thing right now, is, Jason's very familiar with TIF. We've been doing that for a while, RHID is entirely new. And so for, we've been meeting our, our legal staff, our finance team, community development, city manager's office, to try to wrap our hands around this. And what we've found is that other communities are using these outside resources because it is just, it's, it's so much at one time. But I think that, so the way that they structure these in other communities is it's kind of an on-call, month by month. So we would generate a scope for them that month of, okay, we want to tackle this. And we could revise that as we go through. If we're going to be hiring them to help with our RHID development, it makes a lot of sense for them to go ahead and just take a quick look at IRBs and our workforce housing sales tax, so they understand how we can leverage and use all of them together.
So it wouldn't necessarily be, we are going to have an ongoing contract with Baker Tilly to administer our housing incentive program? That, it would just be kind of a, a, an à la carte, ad hoc kind of thing? As we, as we come up with some ideas, we give it to them and they review it? Is that what we're, we're thinking?
Yeah, and I think that initially, maybe for that first year, we may rely on them to help us with the development agreements. We may rely, they still have to be involved when we, when we go to create an RHID because of the bonding component, we have to, we, we have to leverage them and their expertise. But it's not, at this point, we're not suggesting that they actually administer the entire program, but it gives staff a, a chance to kind of come alongside them as they develop it, and really understand how much staff time is it gonna take? I have no idea right now.
Right.
And so I think that they could help us to calculate some of that, and really know what are we getting ourselves into? And then what's the best way to recoup that revenue? Is it, so for some communities, they tack on like a, a five percent fee on the RHID, and that five percent goes back to the city to actually administer.
Okay.
That, or to pay for bond counsel to draft the development agreements. Those are things that they can help us figure out, and the best way to, to structure that.
That was gonna be my next question, was how do we pay for them? So, yeah, I think that's, that's a, that's a good option. Now, with our, how are, are, how do, are we seeing RHIDs being different and more beneficial than our current? Is it PUD, is that the right, with the special assessments?
Benefit district.
Benefit district, yeah.
So, special assessments, which are in place for twenty years, allow that property owner to pay us for the debt we issued for the infrastructure over that life. Benefit districts are petitioned by the developer to you all. You accept those petitions traditionally, and we go out and bid the water, the sewer, the streets, the sidewalks, stormwater. We bid that out, we construct it, we manage that infrastructure development. Once, once it's done, they're certified, and then those properties, they're a part of that subdivision. During the petition process, you determine what percentage they pay. If you have twenty lots in a subdivision, you can roughly expect anywhere between three thousand to five thousand dollars per year, per lot, for twenty years. That's the infrastructure cost in a nutshell. RHIDs start to shift the risk around, potentially, of that infrastructure. There are plenty of RHIDs in Kansas structured where the developer takes the risk on the infrastructure, and it's paid back as properties come online and pay taxes. That's, that's a scenario that's, it's really contrary to the current position we're putting developers in by way of building homes. But it leverages a revenue stream back to the payment of those special, of that infrastructure that doesn't exist today.
Right.
So as a property owner, you're paying the three to five grand a year for twenty years per lot, but you're also paying property taxes on top of that.
Right.
Which can be another three to five grand per lot. So you can be paying between six and ten thousand dollars for that twenty-year window until those specials are paid off, and then it comes down to that three to five grand per year. We're talking about a program with RHID that captures that property tax payment, and actually goes towards that infrastructure payment.
So, so the RHID to the developer is depend, could, could really be almost identical to a benefit district?
The only thing is, that lot becomes so mu- so much more desirable.
Right, because, because it doesn't have the specials.
Yeah, and we've talked about a couple of things that could help there, like a, like a lot cost limit. That we recognize in Manhattan, certain third acre, half acre, those all have a relatively consistent lot cost. And, and we could, we know that research is out there, we could research that and actually limit the, the land in terms of a lot cost.
Yeah.
That, that would be something we would entertain with an RHID, that would be part of the development agreement.
Sure.
Negotiated. Shifting that risk away from the city just puts the developer in a different arena. And puts the city in a different arena as well. We are able to control, have oversight, inspect, and really manage the infrastructure going out in our community today. We shift this to the developer, we're still gonna have some oversight and some participation, but it won't be like we are today. The other thing we've got to consider is all the infrastructure in ground today, all the lots that are available today, and implementing a new program and a new approach. Do benefit districts stay available for a certain price point? And do RHIDs become available for a certain price point? And are you going to shift all that risk for infrastructure to the developer? Or as a community, are we willing to keep that risk through special obligation bonds, much like you would with a TIF? And it's really that flexibility of, do you want to go ahead and call, issue that debt? Hold it, and wait for those property tax payments to come in to help you pay for it? Similar to what you do today in special assessments, but that's not how RHIDs, for the most part, are being administered across the state. Those developers in those cities were taking that risk on that infrastructure anyway, so they were taking it again, but their lots become so much more desirable because they can, they don't have specials. They would just have those property taxes paying those off.
And I think that is a discussion worth pursuing at some point, in that there are advantages, if you have, you know, the RHID, it's all on your mortgage. advantages, if you have, you know, the RHID, it's all on your mortgage, you can pay it monthly, you don't get this giant bill in November, and of course, sometimes the city gets left with like South Rees holding the bag, and of course, if we look at Junction City, that's very unfortunate, where they put the infrastructure in for, how many homes? I don't know, 100?
Several, yeah.
Yeah, and then the developer left, and they've been really in real problem having, no, this has been 10 years.
Yeah.
And that was a residential TIF, which RHIDs are essentially residential TIFs. You're, you're using that property tax payment and applying it back towards that infrastructure, just like you would do in a TIF district.
Okay. One other, sorry, one other question. The land use and zoning policy, would that conversation maybe include things like the, the cottage communities-
Musters.
... and possibly accessory dwelling units?
Yeah, we, we can, I mean, unless you guys give us direction, otherwise, we're going to kind of open all things housing up, and have a conversation of where the commission's guidance, and where you sit on some of those issues, and how you would like us to address them. It's really difficult to just work in a silo on some of those and not look at it comprehensively.
Sure.
Stephanie, I'd like to have you consider, beyond housing, you know, we talk about certain areas of town where it's very difficult for people to reach a grocery store.
Mm-hmm.
Can we include as part of that discussion whether there'd be appropriate rezoning efforts to put, not a, not a Walmart, not a Hy-Vee, but you know, a small run to the store because you're out of milk or, or sugar type of place in some of the more residential communities? So more mixed-use areas?
Okay. Or maybe just access to transportation to get you to Dylan's.
Well, those are-
So I mean, putting them, giving more points if they're near, you know, I mean, if, if we plunk somebody at the very end of Grand Mare, it's not going to be very easy for someone that's, you know, low income.
Right, but this is, this is, I think that's a separate conversation than looking right at land use and zoning, the, the transportation is a separate thing to consider.
So one of the things, I think, Mayor, what you were referencing, is when we take a look at our future land use map, which is embedded within our comprehensive plan, it's what outlines, these are all the future land uses, so when you consider rezoning, you're also referencing that future land use map, so what we could do, if I'm hearing you correctly, is identify kind of these neighborhood commercial nodes within the residential areas to incentivize that, that commercial component for some of those basic everyday needs. So that's a way that we could incorporate that and have the conversation during that period.
I'm thinking, in particular, for example, that, that business that left the Northview area, was it Blue River Trading, something like that? There's a, it, that was a commercial entity at that location on, on Tuttle Creek Boulevard. Would it be possible to put a small shop in there, a small grocery store, convenience store? So, yeah.
That's currently not in the city limits, so-
But our comp plan does address it from neighborhood-
It does, yep, it does show commercial.
Okay, so people, people who have that interest, we might not be able to help you directly, but consider an investment.
Yeah, the future land use map is really an opportunity to guide how you, what uses you want in certain areas of town, and the last time we looked at that was 2015, so we're definitely in need of a refresh there. So just to, to kind of quickly summarize what I heard from you this evening, bring back Commissioner Opel, bring back a scope of work from Baker-Tilly and from Gilmore and Bell, to see what services they would provide, how that would be structured, and what that associated cost would be. We will, I will go back and refine the sales tax exemption to have that be 120% AMI and below, recognizing that and doing that, and Jason addressed this, but there is going to be more oversight on staff's part to follow up, meaning that there's also going to be a, a development agreement involved to outline what the, the terms of that agreement are. So that's just a little bit of additional process that, than we typically do. And then for the tax abatement, we liked the map, again, the 120% below for that one. Is there anything else that was of note that I, I missed there?
Stephanie, do you have enough staff to do this?
Oh, that's part of what we need to evaluate, and a lot of it, I mean, it comes back to the monitoring. The more that we monitor, the more that we put development agreements in place, and it's not just my team, it's city attorney's office, city managers, finance, this is a, this is a big undertaking, and we just really want to know what we're walking into, which is why we're wanting our, our financial advisors and, and Gilmore and Bell to come along on this journey with us. I don't know if Jason has anything to add there?
Those relationships are just so important. We use them today on any 126A, which is benefit district, any TIF, I mean, and those individuals, Gilmore and Bell gets compensated with every bond issue that we do. If we get into RHIDs or even IRBs, those have issuance in which those entities are paid. Where we're headed with them, though, is to bring them in more early. They'll be part of the tail end of every process, but we want them in earlier so we can facilitate these discussions, have professionals in the room with that experience that'll help us gain the experience, still, to where maybe a few years down the road, we don't need them as a consultant, we have the in-house expertise. We have the in-house expertise on benefit districts right now. We still engage with Gilmore and Bell, on occasion, on a developer who's very creative and wants to do something a little unusual, will engage with bond council. They know those state statutes just as well as anybody, and we do engage with them. But at this point in time, that relationship upfront, two-to-three-year window, I think we can gain a lot of perspective and knowledge from their experiences in other places as well.
And there is, there are funds in the pot for administration, right?
Those are at your discretion to define. That, that 10% towards workforce housing is, is fairly broad, and there again, there's policies that we're talking to you all about adopting, and if you want to include those costs as, as a part of that revenue stream, we can certainly do that.
I know, one of the recommendations in the workforce housing report out was to minimize administration costs, and, you know, I know a lot of, you know, means-tested assistance programs and stuff like that have been shown to spend more money testing those means than they would save, or than they actually end up saving. So I'd like to avoid something like that, where we end up spending more money and more time on staff than we do that, to make it really actually worth our time. So if it becomes a burden in that way, definitely tell us, and we can, we'll, we'll try to adjust that, to try and, try and avoid that.
Okay, thank you.
The only other comment I would offer on the 120%, we'll do some analysis as well, see if we can't come up with different scenarios, whether that's within the existing fabric or looking at 1899 and below, maybe there's a different number there we can come up with for the sales tax exemption piece of it, at least.
Thank you, Stephanie, for a very comprehensive presentation. I would like to call for a five-minute adjournment. This is a lot that we just processed, and we have a very important conversation coming up before us.
Is there any public input?
Oh, I'm sorry, forgot to ask.
If you need five minutes now, we can take them, and you can come back and get a comment, but it's up to you, Mayor.
All right. Is there a public comment on what Stephanie has just presented? Okay, let, let's take five minutes, and when we come back, we'll hear from, so we begin at, let's take six minutes, be back at 7:45. If we can resume, please, please wrap up your conversations, it's now 7:45. And, 7:45, we will resume the city commission meeting for May 28th, 2024. And we will now receive public comment on the last, the previous item agenda, discussing an approach to housing policies regarding industrial revenue bonds, workforce housing sales tax funds, and reinvestment housing incentive districts. Members of the public, please sign up at the podium. If you have not already signed up to, to speak, please sign in with your name and residential address and/or the organization you are representing. Each speaker can have five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop when the timer sounds. Neither commissioners nor city staff will answer questions or debate during, or debate an issue, but we will take your comments under advisement, so.
Would you care to scroll down?
The computer's in front of you.
Is that a copy?
No, it's, uh-
It has agenda item number?
Oh, it'd be two, but the, the computer that's controlling it's right in front of you.
Oh, I have control, ooh, what am I going to do with all this power?
Keep going.
Yep, I got it.
There, stop.
It's item B.
It's so little.
Would you like to make your remark?
I certainly can't be the only one, can I?
Well, you're-
You went up? You went up?
I'm certainly the only one to sign in, right?
No, people do it sequentially, so, you can, you, please.
I love speaking last, it's my favorite.
No, ma'am, if you want to make a remark about agenda item 4B, please return to the podium.
Hi, I have quite a few notes, but I'll try to make this as short as possible.
Can you announce your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Jessica Winters, I live over at 408 Houston Street. So I, I, I noticed that you all had some really good questions for the person that was up here, I, I agree with a lot of those, how are we going to pay this? How are we going to hold the developer, developers accountable to make sure they don't do what they did in St. George? And I'm worried that we're already behind on budget and behind on staffing, that this may just be a project that is too big for the city to take on right now. Is that, is that appropriate?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, that was pretty much the entirety of my comment.
Thank you. Donna, would you like to come up?
And if anybody else wants to sign in while I'm talking, I don't think it'll distract me. Donna Shankhamlin, 1922, Leavenworth. My comments are just restricted to the workforce solar house, oops, workforce housing, spry day and slip, sales tax issue, and they refer to what I'm assuming are the desired requirements on page two of the description, if you want to take a look at that. And they refer to what I'm assuming are the desired requirements on page two of the description, if you wanna take a look at that. A number of items stood out to me. One, if you wanna take a look at that page, is that there was in number five, a focus on rental projects. And a question that that triggered in my mind was, could we, in our desired requirements, create an incentive for those developers and landlord, landlords to encourage adoption of housing choice voucher holders? There's a huge waiting list, and that is something that we might consider. But larger than that, I, I found a missing aspect of housing tenure in this whole plan. It seems like we're only looking at homeownership, thirty-year mortgage, or rental. And in the housing market analysis, as well as in the discussions that I participated in, in the Workforce Committee, we did talk about shared equity solutions. There will be forthcoming workshops on shared equity, including limited equity cooperatives and community land trusts. But I think that we really need to acknowledge that there could be developments in, in other formats than just rental and, and other property. I'm, I'm also concerned that in this criteria, where five points are given, if, if you're fulfilling the vision of an applicable adopted district plan, that when I look at the footnote, I don't see any reference to a Northview plan. And yet, we also said that we wanted to focus on northeast as well as the downtown core area. So we wouldn't like to see no disadvantage because there aren't, there doesn't exist, or maybe there does exist, and I just don't know about it, a Northview plan that this would be consistent with. I, I really like the, the emphasis in number three of including adaptive reuse and revitalization of existing buildings, getting a high ranking. I think that there is a little bit of confusion with regard to the language of four and five. But I, I, as a member of that task force, one of the things I'd like to see is monitoring of this process. Mayor, you said that this will go through a test period. In addition to the expertise that we might need from the legal community and the financial community, I would like to see the target consumer community, particularly renters, participating in an oversight capacity. Particularly with regard to determining that the rent hasn't been raised, that people hold to their agreements. And again, this is a great opportunity for rental inspections to come in as part of the process.
Thank you. Are there further comments?
I should've signed in here when Donna was talking, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Josh Brewer, Habitat for Humanity of the Northern Flint Hills. Wanted to thank Stephanie for her presentation. That was a very comprehensive, robust, yet easy to understand, and appreciate the, the bathroom break afterwards. We talk a lot about exclusionary housing policies and how many of our housing system issues have been created by those policies. So I really wanna show my appreciation for the city, talking about inclusionary housing policies. In this case, we're talking about a policy that is inclusive of workforce families, people who earn between sixty and a hundred and twenty percent of our area median income. And we, we're a all-of-the-above policy support group. And the two policies we're talking about here tonight, tax relief for developers and direct subsidies, are two of the more rare subsidies that are used, two of the more rare incentives that are used. And so I think that's impressive for our city to be using incentives that are not as common as a part of the policy framework. So as we use that toolkit, I, I wanna strongly encourage us to also use policies like density bonuses, zoning variances, expedited fees and waivers, and pre-approved plan sets that are a little bit more common. So we're doing the hard thing here tonight. Let's make sure that we, we finish out the toolkit with some easier action items. And additionally, removal of parking minimums. I do have some concerns based on the presentation. I think it was raised, this question of affordability. We also use HUD data, and we struggle with that. I think there's a question of bedrooms that would be really helpful, as we say, affordable for whom. If we have a studio apartment that rents at nineteen hundred dollars a month, that's a very different situation than a four-bedroom or five-bedroom house that's rent restricted to nineteen hundred dollars a month. So I think this policy could probably have some clarity on that, that would help people understand what they're, kinda what they're targeting there. And the same's true for the owner-occupied structures. I understand the monitoring piece of that could add a little, some additional burden on city staff, but I think it could be easily done through the planning and plan approval process. On process, I do have a little bit of a concern at the level of community engagement in developing this, this scorecard. I think a little bit more participatory model would have been very much appreciated, especially from those neighbors in the downtown core. I live in the downtown core as well, and I think many of my neighbors make that a wonderful, really attractive place to live. And I think we should have a say in, in what criteria are used to incentivize development in our neighborhood. Additionally, I have a practical concern about equitable access to units. We know that, that some populations have more buying power than others, and given the proximity of this IRB zone to campus and to Aggieville, we really need to think about how different groups are gonna access these properties. I understand there's a huge monitoring burden that comes alongside that, but we need to make sure that we're not putting units in the market just to get gobbled up by student renters, or second home buyers, or groups that have more buying power than others. Lastly, I wanna echo what Donna said. Strongly encourage that this subsidy, this is a public burden, it is a subsidy for workforce housing. It should be stewarded long-term, using a community land trust, a shared equity cooperative, or a deed restriction model, so that we're not right back in this position again in five years. If we've asked the public to subsidize this, and I think the public is willing to do so, we need to make sure that it's sustainable. And lastly, we should not be subsidizing any units that do not meet twenty twenty-one energy efficiency standards. Affordability is not just the amount of money that goes to rent, it's also the money that goes to utilities. And I, I think that that's a minimum standard the City of Manhattan should adopt, but we should certainly be incentivizing that, or zero-energy-ready construction in our scorecard. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Excellent remarks. Appreciate your very thorough listening to the, and reflection on this. Anyone else? Miss, would you like to take your turn now?
Thank you, I needed to look at my notes. Help me understand why we're focusing on rentals.
Can you please start the timer?
And please state your name and address, too, please.
Amber Starling, four oh eight Houston. Can you help me understand why we're focusing on rentals instead of co-ops or making lease-to-own, one of the prerequisites?
This, we're, this is not an exchange.
Of course.
It's an opportunity for you to voice your opinion.
Okay. I, I fail to understand how redistributing wealth to property developers and landlords helps our workforce access housing. I understand that we are already in a budget shortfall of about two million dollars, and you are considering now taking property taxes, more property taxes, out of the equation for ten years. I don't, I didn't see any understanding or explanation of how this tax abatement will impact future shortfalls, again, for the next decade. How much money in property taxes will we lose, and for how long, and how is that gonna affect our future budgets? Those are considerations that I expect you to make. How will we certify these rates? We don't even have enough staff right now to ensure that building codes are being followed properly in our rental units for our college students. But we're going to somehow magically come up with a staff to be able to certify that the rates are correct, and that they have done everything that they need to do to still benefit from this program. And insufficient taxation of new builds can broadly affect a community, and it's not just what happened in Junction City. Look at St. George. St. George did not adequately tax one of their new developments when those developments came in, and they didn't have any specials on it either. And all those people came in and needed to use the water, then all of a sudden, our facility was starting to break down, and we don't have the money to fix it. They cannot meet EPA requirements for their drinking water right now with nitrates because of this. And I need you to understand that people's lives are at stake when we make these decisions. It's not just numbers or names in a budget seat. These are people's lives. I did not see that we had any understanding so far of how much infrastructure improvement would be needed to add the population in the Aggieville District. We don't know specifically how much these services need to be upgraded, and where they need to be upgraded first. There's water, there's sewers, there's roads, internet, lighting, pedestrian affixes, parking. I, I don't see that we have a plan or budget to address those structure improvements, a list of even just, just five off-the-top-of-your-head projects that would need to go in. A total estimated budget, not anything. So I do really do think that it is quite premature to be talking about whether or not we should change property taxes for these areas for the next ten years. We don't even have a full board right now, and there's not, it's Winslow's seat, and then another previous seat for Ms. Morse is now not represented by the people that elected those officials. So I think it's really early to be looking at this.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Scott Seal, seventy-eight hundred Washington Boulevard. Echo a lot of the comments tonight, so I don't wanna repeat too much of that. But I wanna appreci, appreciate Stephanie and the community development team's presentation and all of the work that they've done on this project for the last, I don't know how long, two years since we started talking about this. But I really appreciated Mayor Adam Cech's comment earlier tonight, that this is a living, breathing process, and that we're not gonna get it completely one hundred percent right the first time. And as we go through this, we're gonna learn along the way, and we're gonna get better at it. But what I really want to avoid, and what I really want to impress upon the commission, is that we need to start moving the ball. And we need to start doing something now, because what I don't, what I'm worried is gonna happen is that we can keep having Stephanie's staff go back and make little adjustments here and there and there, and then a year from now, we're still trying to perfect something, and nothing has happened. So I really wanna impress upon us that, to, to do something tonight, hopefully, or soon, so that, and we can always come back and fix what isn't perfect. But, but let's, it's, it's time to make the leap and say that we've had a housing study, we did another housing study twenty years before that that said the exact same thing, and nothing happened in between. And so I don't wanna do that for another twenty years. So, and the other thing that I think will benefit for that is that, that allows us to start getting specific proposals in front of us, that are specific pieces of property, and specific plans, and specific ideas. And then we can say, okay, well, this, we can make those adjustments on case-by-case basis, instead of trying to imagine every single thing that might happen in the future. So what I would like to see us do tonight or soon is set, a, a set of guidelines and a, and a path forward, and then worry about the specifics when we have specific proposals, and make adjustments as we come across them. Secondly, on RHID, there's a couple of, I mean, I think we all know that when we're talking about RHID and an infill project, and something that has been no tax generation for years and years and years, that absent something, nothing is going to happen there. It's going to continue to be no revenue. So there is no, if we do it right, if we're doing, talking about info process, there's no loss of revenue, because we wouldn't get it anyway without doing something. But also, I, I wanna address what is, I, I hear a lot as a concern with RHID, and that is the specter that the county or the school, school district might veto. And I think we, we all know that that is a possibility, but I don't want to see what I feel like what's happening in Potawatomi County, where Wamigo has a proposal, they wanna do it, but nobody will do anything because they're afraid of what the Potawatomi County Commission might do, and probably understandably so. But what, what that has become is effectively a pocket veto of that, and I don't want to see that here. I would like to see that if we get to the point where we're ready for this, and we're still, we're not sure that Riley County will go along, if they're gonna veto it, I, my response to that is let them. Let them be the first county commission in the state of Kansas to veto an RHID project. I don't think they will. But I also think that, again, it's a case-by-case basis. They don't have to approve every single proposal that comes before them. If they have a specific issue with a specific proposal, then we can work to mitigate that, and maybe they don't do that one, but maybe they do the next one. But we'll never know if we don't take action. So, and I, I, I would like to see the timeline be a little bit faster than what was on the, the board today, but I understand the various things at play that are causing that to potentially be January twenty twenty-five before we have proposals in front of you guys. But if, if we don't take action today, that January twenty twenty-five could easily become July twenty twenty-five, and then January twenty twenty-six, and so on. So I, I urge you guys to, to take action, be the, be the first commission in a long time to, to really, truly do something for housing in our community, and, and start getting some supply so that we can, we can start providing housing for the people that need it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. I think, I, just to remind you, I'm sure everyone here is aware, this is already the fourth or fifth commission meeting in the last three months, four months, where we have discussed housing, and we are making progress. Sorry, it can't be faster, but, you know, we, I think it was clear from Stephanie's presentation that she has reached out to quite a number of colleagues across the state, as well as the financial experts, to see how this can move forward.
Good evening, I'm Mel Boris, nineteen eighteen Humboldt Street. I really appreciate all the effort by all to get to this point. I know there's gonna be a lot more effort going forward, and I appreciate this discussion tonight. I am, I guess, as I get more familiar with it, 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 it seems that if things are getting targeted to, to developers more than the workforce ownership, that could take advantage of existing housing stock in, in these neighborhoods, in the older core area of town. And I also am concerned about, you know, following the land use, comprehensive land use plan, and there were some concerns, I think, expressed already tonight about citizen involvement that the plan calls for, neighborhood especially, neighborhood stabilization, undertaking programs targeted towards the stabilization of established neighborhoods in and around the core area, enhancing the quality of life in existing neighborhoods, and infill development, encouraging compatible infill development within the area. I, I guess, getting back to the opportunity for the workforce to own homes that have rental units in them, or a unit, I, I wonder if, if the criteria could include, you know, the model that we see that was so successful post-war, with homeowners opening up their, you know, homes to students, you know, on a GI bill that were coming back, but, you know, developing basement apartments, that kind of thing, that it was very successful to help them pay the mortgages. And so we, I think that perhaps this funding could be leveraged to, to further that, as well as to encourage stability in the neighborhoods, as well as enhancement of the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Are there any other further comments on this topic?
My name's Zach Burton with Fortress and we have been working on projects for the past 12 months now that target the 60 to 120% AMI. We have 21 units that are nearing completion, 14 of those are in service and seven more are nearing completion. We are either 100% sold or 100% rented in that 61 to 120% AMI, to the point that the last three units that we put on for rent were all taken in one day. And so the demand is there for this. It's something that our community desperately needs and we are making progress. I agree with that. I think I'm only going to speak just to the workforce housing portion of that now. That's one where we don't have any, we don't have any other strings attached. There's no city or there's, excuse me, there's no state or federal legislation that's applied to that. It's, it's a decision that you guys can make tonight. I, I really appreciate everything that Stephanie has put into this, Jason and the rest of the staff. There's been a ton of it. The, the workforce housing program that I, that has been presented tonight, it's, it's not everything that I would want personally and I think that everybody else who, who has come up here tonight has also said that, like, there's things I'd like to tweak on that, there's things I'd like to do different, but maybe it's just a great place to start. And while it's not perfect for me and while it's not exactly what I want, maybe it does move the ball forward. And so I'd also like to encourage you just today that we have an opportunity tonight to put something in place. If you, if, if we don't like that, maybe we would just simplify it to say that it's 60 to 120% AMI and bring projects forward and yearly they have to be assessed on that. But just something to where it could be, everybody agree and just, and just try something to see, to see if we can make it work. And the other, just the last point that I would make is I came to the Lytec conversation about a month ago and that's for low-income housing and there are so many, there's so many programs in place for that and, and really outstanding programs that, that I love that our city is, is taking on. There's nothing in place for workforce housing. So between 60 and 120% AMI, there are no, there are no programs that target that and we have an opportunity to do that and really fix that, that area of our community that is desperately needed. So I just encourage you to do that as well, as quickly as we can move something forward. There's people that need to do that now. And I was asked a question, if you're going to do these projects anyway, why do we need to incentivize them? And I think the answer to that is, is that we've personally done this to try to prove that the model can work. We've personally done this to try to, to show that there's a need in the community. It's, it is, it is our least profitable venture that we have. And in fact, we've subsidized it with some of our own money to the point where it, it does break even, but it's not making us very much money. And so I, I, I think that's the thing that the commission really needs to understand without incentivization in this workforce housing 60 to 120, 20% AMI slot, from a development perspective, I don't, I don't see it moving forward very much. And it's something that we need. And so when we look at the consumer and what they need and the people who need this, I would just encourage you again to, to move forward with something and then if it's not working, let's tweak it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments on this agenda item? Public comment, seeing no one else approaching, public comment is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions for Stephanie?
Just, great job. Thank you for all your hard work.
As this was a discussion item tonight, no motion is required and we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is consider filling the vacant city commission position. As you are aware, we have several options of how we proceed in this effort. The commission decided, concluded last week it was expedient to move towards appointing someone to fill the open seat. We are not in any way trying to subvert democracy by not holding a special election. There are timing constraints that make that complicated. Filing deadline would be next Monday, June 3rd. There are restrictions on when special elections can be held. It cannot be held within 45 days of a primary or a general election. So basically we would have to have the election in about, by the end of June, probably. That's not really very feasible. And if more than three candidates or if three candidates file, we would have to have a primary election. We have asked the county, now I'm blanking.
Clerk.
Clerk to provide us some, a ballpark figure of what this would cost and all he has replied is it would be expensive. We've not, so we are frustrated with it, with the county as well to not give us any more information than that. As you, as you're aware, this is already going to be a complicated election at the general election period. This is not because, and there was an editorial in our paper just recently about the additional ramifications of conflating a nonpartisan election for a city commission seat with what will be a very contentious partisan election this season. I think we can all agree, regardless of which side we represent, that things are not looking pretty going into November. And I would not want to taint our efforts at being nonpartisan by having this occur at the same time. Further, because it would be a nonpartisan, our part of it would be nonpartisan, additional ballots would have to be prepared for every voting area in, voting entity within the city limits. So, that being said, I believe last week the commission agreed to move towards appointing someone to fill the concluded, oh, in the last, sorry, just to back up one minute, the final consideration is that should we have an election that implies fundraising, campaigning, et cetera, et cetera, that person would only be elect, would not be elected and, and put in this seat until five months from now or six months from now. We have serious decisions that we need to make in a much shorter timeframe. So it would be expeditious for us and I think it is part of our responsibility as your elected officials to try to proceed in a way that allows us to have a full complement of commissioners tackling some of these difficult decisions. And as I said, whoever is put into place would only be filling Commissioner Butler's, the length of his term, which would conclude at the end of 2025. So for these various reasons, the commissioners have concluded that our most expedient process would be to appoint someone to fill this open position. We did have two motions put forward last week for two individuals that did not proceed to a second, so we will again have this, have a discussion tonight. We have been approached by probably about 10 individuals expressing interest in filling the position. This has ranged from several people who submitted resumes, letters of intent, gathered a number of endorsements from members of the community and at the opposite end of the spectrum, there were several individuals who said, oh, consider me. And we should consider you because. So I think we, there is a pool of experienced people who have expressed interest. At least one former commissioner has indicated that she would be willing to return to fill out this term. So I'm going to open it up for discussion. I would urge us all to remain civil. It's a little bit awkward doing this on, on TV in public. Let us not denigrate anyone whose name gets mentioned and please don't denigrate us for trying to do our job as well as we can. As you might imagine, we have received a number of emails that have not been very pleasant to read. That being said, we've also received a number that offered us good wishes and encouragement to talk, to make a good decision tonight. So, Commissioners, is there, would anyone like to open our discussion?
I guess one thing, just from procedural, is we could have a discussion or do some nominations or whatever, but if we're going to allow public comment, would we want to do that first or how would we want to handle it?
Good question.
Do we have a comment from our lawyer?
It's your call, Commissioner.
Okay. I'm fine taking public comment first.
All right. So we will open it up for public comment. We had three people sign initially, so in the order Percy, I'm sorry, I can't read your handwriting, but come on up.
Yes, hello, my name is Percy or Persephone Yeri. I live on 701 North 9th Street over on, by Aggieville. And I wanted to, I'm a local woman, I'm a military veteran, as well as a secretary of the Flint Hills Democratic Socialists of America, who I'm speaking on behalf of. We meet every second Thursday.
Percy, Percy, sorry, could you just one side or the other towards?
Oh, yeah, yeah, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so my name's Percy Yeri. I live at 701 North 9th Street over in Blument, or not Blument, by Aggieville. I'm a local woman, I'm an Army veteran, as well as a secretary of the Flint Hills Democratic Socialists of America, which we meet every second Thursday of every month at 6:00 PM in the Manhattan Library. And on behalf of our DSA chapter, I wanted to express some deep concerns that we have about this commission's conscious decision not to hold an election to fill the mayoral vacancy left by a Win Butler's DUI. This decision is not only undemocratic, but furthermore, as the mayor's comment, the acting mayor's comments prove, it exposes the fundamentally undemocratic nature of the entire American political system. The most basic measure of a democracy is for the ability of the citizens to elect their representatives. Apparently, democracy can only matters when it can be facilitated at a discount. They care more about dollar signs than democratic values. And as the mayor's comments prove, this is definitely not an isolated incident, but rather a systemic and structural problem that permeates every level of American government, from the city commission to the presidential election of the Electoral College to the Supreme Court where there is no election. We live under a dictatorship of the bourgeoisie and the wealthy, where working women and men's voices are ignored and where working people's needs are cast aside in favor of the whims of those who own the means of production. Some folks might object to this because of the difficulty of organizing an emergency election. And again, I ask like, what are we paying taxes for if not to ensure the basic functioning of our democracy, to give them as handouts to real estate developers? I also consider, I don't remember who made the comment, but someone made a comment about, why don't we build more luxury condominiums? And to me, that expresses a fundamental divorce from like the needs and the, the desires and wants of the average working-class person in Manhattan. It's just, it makes me very upset. And the housing discussion that we had earlier is further proof that I believe that this commission is not considering the democratic interests of the common people. And I believe that the constituents are therefore proved to be not working-class people, but rather property developers and landlords. My goal here today is not merely to call for reformed elections or replace one politician with another. As a proud member and elected officer of the Flint Hills Democratic Socialists of America, I believe in true democracy, that is, the rule of the majority and the will of the people. It is not enough merely for our voices to be heard, but we have to also have to build the power to enforce that democratic will. So I call on all members of the community, many who raised fantastic and excellent points here tonight, who are as outraged about this housing issues and voting rights and other injustices, to join us at the Flint Hills DSA meeting at the Manhattan Public Library, 6:00 PM on the second Thursday of every month. There, we will educate ourselves, strategize, and most importantly, organize to take back our power, because when we come together and unite behind a common cause, there is nothing we cannot achieve. The commissioners, as you just heard, will tell us that their hands are tied, the law says they can't hold an election and that all may be true, but just remember that the law is nothing more than a spell of the wealthy designed to keep us in line and protect their own interests. If we organize and rally together behind a common goal, we have the power to break that spell, not through the courts or the ballot box, but through the unstoppable force of a united and mobilized people. So again, I just want to invite everyone to join me and let's work together to expose the sham of a democracy and build a new system that truly represents the will of the people. 6:00 PM, second Thursday of the month at the Public Library. Be there because we have a world to win. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Percy. Noah? Is Noah still in the room?
My name is Noah. I actually work for the city, but what I'm saying isn't representative of people who I work with or anything like that and I'm not here to stir the pot or anything like, you know, anything like that. And I work as a lab worker testing your drinking water. So I just came to give my two cents on the matter. I believe that the city of Manhattan should hold an election for any and all vacant city commission seats. The voters of, you know, Usha and Butler currently do not have proper representation, in my opinion, and I believe them to be, I believe the voters are entitled to an election as soon as possible, so that way they can have the leadership that they trust, that they trust will actually represent their interests. So I know the city has the resources to host an election. Most of the, I guess, opposition or concerns, the mayor just laid out a little bit ago. And much of that has to do with money, that candidates wouldn't have enough time to raise money for their campaign and that partisan dollars would be interfering in our city's election process. It really seems that money is such a major issue or a major obstacle in hosting free and fair elections. I would suggest that the city creates a standard operating procedure when a, a city commissioner's seat becomes vacant. We all, as Manhattan voters, as soon as we hear that, we know that there is going to be a special election in process, you know, a few months, however long, we can come together as a community and hash out the details. And second, we could host public elections. That is definitely something we can't do. When there's something that is essential in our society, like drinking water, like I test, we as a community ensure that whatever that is has the funding that it needs to operate. And one of those things could be our election process. We could have a neutral platform, sort of like a town hall, so that everybody's ideas can be properly conveyed and we as a public can ask questions and dissect those ideas. We don't have to have a political system where private money disrupts our democratic process or where partisan dollars get involved and, you know, throw a wrench in things. We can have a city that values democracy and sees the democratic process as sacred. We could even go as far as celebrating our democratic values and the elections we host by making an election day, making election day a citywide holiday. So in summary, I think this is a great opportunity to reexamine our election process and work towards an electoral process where our leaders are guaranteed to be elected rather than appointed, where private and partisan dollars have little to no influence over our elections, where money is not an obstacle for Manhattan residents when running for the city commission. when running for the city commission or when hearing about other candidates and the ideas that they have. And I finally, and finally, we can work towards an electoral process that is celebrated as the sacred process that every Manhattan resident of age is entitled to, rather than being viewed as an afterthought. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jessica?
Are we just talking to this?
Yep. You can adjust it.
So I think that a lot of great things have been said tonight.
Yes, please, you don't need to sign in again, but please tell us your name and address.
Jessica, 408 Houston Street. Jessica Winters. I think a lot of great things have been brought up this evening. I, too, am concerned about making sure that we have somebody on council to represent the people. But I also recognize the time crunch we're in. We have a lot of different things that are coming up that need to be handled. And it's not a great time to set all of that aside and do an election. That being said, like, I think that it is an issue to a lot of the people here because of some of the decisions that this council has previously made. And handing down edicts in the past. It hasn't really ingratiated a lot of people with the community. And our concern is that you will appoint somebody like Wyn Butler, who will get drunk and drive into the front of a liquor store. Like, it's just, there's no trust. I think it's a bit, a big issue that we're struggling with.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other people in the room who would like to speak?
Mel Borst. I appreciate how this commission has approached this and the last meeting where very good comments and ideas came forward and the mayor's leadership in considering these further tonight. And the comment that I thought about since last meeting was appointing a former commissioner that is familiar with the situations that we have in front of us now. And I really appreciate that a lot, instead of having to have a learning curve at this point. And I also think, you know, it would be wonderful if we could have an election and the public could pick who they would like. But it just doesn't seem to be a good fit at this time. So for that reason, I would like to recommend perhaps a consideration of Linda Morse to represent Northview on the commission for a better representation of commissioners across town. I think that might be, you know, something to consider. And I do know also that Linda has been very involved with the community affairs for many, many years and League of Women Voters, as well as sitting in on the land use plan formulation that we currently are using now. And so I just wanted to make those comments, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mel. Are there any additional comments from the public?
Could now be an okay time to?
Jamie Minton, 3012 Back Nine Circle. Hello, commissioners. First, I want to acknowledge the difficult task before all of you. I know you would have preferred a more democratic process for filling the vacancy, but I applaud you for prioritizing expedience and fiscal responsibility. As you know, I'm Jamie Minton, and I would like to fill the vacant city commission seat. I want to thank you all for taking time to meet with me and many others over the past week. Thought it was necessary to speak not just to you tonight, but to the public as well. If I am chosen for the seat, I think it is important the public know the person being appointed. And if I'm not selected, I think it is equally important for the public to know who they're missing out on. I'm a nearly 20-year resident of Manhattan and have been building a successful career at Metalark for over the past 14 years. In addition to being a businesswoman, I'm a K-State graduate, community supporter, baseball coach, wife, and mother. I understand the need of wanting an experienced commissioner. And although I have not served on the commission, I challenge you to find someone with more relevant experience. Metalark Retirement Community is in many ways a small town of 400-plus residents and even more employees. On a daily basis, I manage their differing wants, needs, and opinions. I do this through conversations, discussions, and above all, clarity of expectations. At the forefront of expectations is fiscal management. I direct and manage a variety of service areas, from home health, to food service, to campus sales. In all of those areas, it is crucial that I create realistic and factual budgets, that I hold myself and my team members accountable. Additionally, I am actively involved in capital improvement planning and budgeting, including project oversight of our recently renovated restaurant and new apartment building. My colleagues and I led Metalark through a national healthcare pandemic, in which we not only survived, but we are thriving. Despite difficulties facing our industry, we created a place people went to live and work. Much like any organization, business, community, or city, you will not survive unless you thrive. Outside of work, I've supported recreation and youth programming, healthcare improvement, and Kansas State University Ag Innovation Initiative, all of which I feel are vital to the success of Manhattan. As a city commission, we need to continue to push to make Manhattan more attractive and sustainable for more people to live, work, and visit. We can only attain that through clarity. Clarity of expectations and clarity of information, not just for the commission, but for the public. For me, the commission seat is not just about the yes or no votes, but about asking the right questions. When we ask the right questions, the community gains understanding, confidence, and trust in the commission and in the city initiatives. Clarity is how we will progress, as it often eliminates opinions from the decisions. I'll use the topic of a sales tax increase to fund Parks and Rec. In speaking with people over the course of several months, and specifically the past week, I find people are very supportive of improving Parks and Recs and using it as an economic development tool. I, too, share that stance, but that doesn't mean I don't come without questions. Last week, the city put together a wonderful presentation requesting feedback on a potential sales tax ballot question, but we need more clarity. It's my understanding the proposed sales tax addition would alleviate almost $6 million annually from the general fund. And although suggestions were made, as a commission, I think we should expect the city to provide a more detailed plan for the use of those general fund dollars. We've heard from some individuals and businesses in our community that they're worried the increased sales tax will cause people to change their spending habits or take their dollars elsewhere. I want to see the behavior modification factors used in projecting the revenue and see comparison information to other cities in similar circumstances. I think it's forward-thinking of the city to include Parks and Rec operations with potential sales tax, but we need to see detailed operations budget with forecasted projections. I want to know what the education plan is to the community in order for them to understand the potential ballot question. How does Parks and Rec plan to work with Visit Manhattan to ensure we're maximizing our investment with opportunities from individuals outside of Manhattan? And finally, if the sales tax does go to ballot and pass, what would the city's plan be for supporting growth and improvement in other departments without increasing future sales tax? I say all this not as a critique of the commission or of the city, but rather to highlight my experience, thought, and abilities that I would bring to the commission. I believe the answers to all of my questions and many more are out there, but the questions need to continue to be asked, and the clarity of expectations needs to be enforced. I will leave you by pointing out that the decisions the commission is making now will impact the future of Manhattan. In 20, 25, or even 30 years, I will still be living and working in Manhattan, and we need more of those voices on city commission. I ask the commission to appoint me to the vacant seat, knowing I will bring progress to the city through clarity. Got to end under five minutes. Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Additional comments?
Get in, commissioners, mayor. I want to simply acknowledge that I have made a comment to one of the commissioners through email, and perhaps that has been shared across all the comments that you've received. You've received a number of very good comments this evening, and you have a lot to weigh in that effort. At this point, there is a cadre of previously elected officials that you have to choose from. I'm not going to, at the moment, endorse any one particularly, but you have an immense pool of previously elected officials that have potentially contacted you regarding an interest in serving in this position, realizing it is interim at best. And so those are simply my comments that I think, hopefully, you will weigh very heavily in your decisions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce? Bruce?
Bruce.
Would you introduce yourself, say your name and address, please?
Bruce McMillan, 1920 Sunset Lane. Thank you.
Are there further public comments?
I want to ask the commission, if I'm allowed to come up to provide a packet. I had emailed it to you this morning, but I'm old-school like that. I have a hard copy. All right. There you go. You got it. Good evening, city commissioners. First, I just want to say that
Name and address.
That's right. My apologies. Fanny Fang, 102 Harvard Place. First, I just want to say I respect my elders. I mean, I was raised in this community. In fact, I went to Manhattan Catholic schools. So this is a little, it feels kind of weird to be up here. But, you know, I am a community advocate, a small business owner, and a longtime resident of Manhattan. I've lived here for over 20 years, and I'm only 28. So most of my life has been here, and I'm so proud to call Manhattan, Kansas, home. And I'm here today to address the commission about my interest in serving alongside you as the fifth commissioner. During last Tuesday's meeting, the commission decided to appoint someone to the open seat instead of holding a special election. And the commission briefly discussed the appointment process and agreed to bring at least one name for a nomination to today's meeting. However, it was unclear how candidates should reach out and with what information. So I asked myself, if I was a commissioner, what would I need to see from a candidate to determine their ability and commitment to this position? First, I contacted each of you individually to express my interest and met with the commissioners who were available. Then I created a packet, which I emailed to each of you this morning and gave to Jared just now. The packet contains my cover letter and resume, which describes my broader vision for the city of Manhattan and why I am qualified and well-prepared to step into this role for the next year and a half and hopefully more. Most importantly, though, the packet contains a list of 83 Manhattan residents who support my candidacy. They signed on electronically by providing their name and address. After the signatures, there is a map showing that these residents live throughout all of Manhattan, not just in a concentrated area. That includes Northview, which is a food desert. And as someone who is in food business, I really appreciate both commissioners bringing up on how we can tackle that issue, and I want to do that alongside you. The commission is an elected body, and we should have a special election, but I understand the reasoning behind the commission's decision against it. So I promised myself and the community that I would only move forward with my candidacy if I received at least 50 signatures, because that would have been what was required of me if I had filed by petition to run for city commission. I collected these 83 signatures within six days during a holiday weekend when people were traveling and spending time with loved ones. The community has shown up for me in many different ways over the years, and I feel obligated to do the exact same. I know that this is not back and forth, but, you know, I think that in this appointment process, there should be a special hearing where the commission can ask us questions about interested candidates, about our vision and qualifications with everyone present, because the community deserves a better understanding of who might represent them. Commissioners, this is your opportunity to appoint someone who seeks to engage with the community and holds themselves to a high standard of transparency and accountability. This is your opportunity to appoint someone who has lived in Manhattan, Kansas, as a child, teenager, young adult, and now as an adult with eyes set on one day raising a family here. These lived experiences provide a unique perspective that does not currently exist on the commission, respectfully. And finally, this is your opportunity to appoint someone who naturally embodies the mission of the city of Manhattan, which is to put the well-being of people at the heart of everything we do. I have, I believe I have demonstrated my ability and commitment to serving as a city commissioner, and I ask for your nomination for the open seat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Fanny. Is there anyone else who would like to make any remarks? Seeing none? Oh, sorry.
So my name is Robin Cole. And I live at 5212 McClown Drive. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. You have a tough job ahead of you, and you have so many things to think about. And I know that you will give very serious consideration to this task ahead of you. I have expressed interest in the potential for filling this vacancy. I, in many ways, feel ideally suited to help meet some of the needs that the city commission is facing at this point and the needs that are being faced by the city of Manhattan. You probably know that I recently retired from being the chief executive officer of Pawnee Mental Health. Pawnee, of course, serves 10 counties in north-central Kansas, but our administrative headquarters are here in Manhattan. And as someone who is both a bachelor's, who has both a bachelor's degree in social work and a master's degree in social work, my entire life has been spent dedicated to the service of others. And in Manhattan, what that has meant has been working as a volunteer for the Crisis Center. As a college student at Kansas State University, I was a co-founder of the Manhattan Emergency Shelter in the early 1980s. Worked in the emergency room at Via Christie Hospital and in the social work department there. Worked in geriatric social work at Wharton Manor Nursing Home here in Manhattan. Spent 28 years of my career providing mental health services either directly or in an administrative role through Pawnee Mental Health Services. I have only been retired six weeks. I had someone say to me, Robin, you've been retired all of about 15 minutes. What is wrong with you? And it, in some ways, does feel kind of like 15 minutes. But I see that part of what the commission needs, part of what the community of Manhattan needs, is someone who is looking out for what is in the best interest of the community. Having been in that executive role, though, for the last 18 years, I also recognize what it is to be in a position where you have to make business decisions, where you have to work within the confines or the constructs of limited funding. As you all know, there's not a lot of money in community mental health. As you all know, there's not a lot of money in community mental health, and there's not a lot of financial resources in delivering care to people who don't have the resources to pay for those services. And yet, I'm pleased to say that during the time that I've been at Pawnee, we have been able to provide services. We have been able to expand services to better meet the needs of the community through organizations such as the Riley County Mental Health Task Force, where we worked collaboratively with law enforcement, with the courts, with the hospitals, with private practitioners to improve the delivery of care in this community. And so I've learned how to work within what is limited financial resources and to make the best of the financial resources that we have at our disposal. I think that one of the things that I'm probably the most proud of is the way, the feedback that I received that talked about how during my time as executive director, as CEO, I was able to help change the conversation about mental health in this community, able to change the conversation about substance use disorders in this community, able to expand the general competency of the community or the culture of the community around the issues. And I think that that's part of what we're looking at the need for tonight, not, again, and I'm using those as examples of parallel activity, parallel experience and skills that are transferable to the kinds of challenges that the city of Manhattan is facing today. And so I just thank you for the opportunity to make myself available.
Commissioners, my name is Harry Watts, 1668 Kingwood Drive. It is with a humble heart that I address you tonight about the open commission seat. Let me first begin by thanking you all for the possibility of being nominated to serve with you as we make decisions for those that we serve, our citizens of Manhattan. I'm grateful to have a few minutes this evening to talk about myself and why you should consider me to serve with each of you by addressing policy issues that will impact the lives of each citizen in this wonderful community. My first email of interest to you, a couple of weeks ago, I attached my resume, which I believe will give you some idea about my professional life and how it has shaped me. To be frank, my 40 years of community and governmental relations work, many of that here in Manhattan, has always been about how can I craft solutions on issues by community consensus, to come to the middle on policy issues that ultimately will have a long-term impact on our citizens, to listen to all sides, to listen to our professional staff, and craft consensus decisions on all policy issues. It's really that simple. But today, this commission must face some challenges that will impact our community today and for many years ahead. To name just a few of them, we all must hire a new city manager. We must give him or her the chance to work with us, his or her staff, and our community. Last Tuesday, we had a discussion about the revitalization of Parks and Recreation Division that will enhance and create quality parks and programs that will impact all families. That is so important to our community. To finally address housing issues that we've spent time today talking about, Stephanie did a great job, that has been on everyone's goals for years. It's time now to address those opportunities so that families can purchase affordable housing that will keep our citizens in Manhattan and to attract those to our wonderful community to help our community grow. You know, we've created a national model for childcare. Let's show everyone how we are addressing that issue with strong community support. To be forward-thinking on our downtown redevelopment, what a wonderful time to really address these issues impacting downtown. When I served on the chamber staff, La Butler, Becky Blake, and I brought in Brent Bowman to visually create what the downtown could look like north and south of the mall, and we did it, and we can do it again. We must finish the work related to the Aggieville Revitalization Plan. I believe that we will all reap the benefit of those efforts for years to come. We must be actively involved addressing workforce development opportunities. Both Jim Janette, CEO and President, and I at M A T C are currently building Phase One of four phases, a new building that will house six technology programs that will double the number of full-time workers in our community. No better return on our investment. We must continue to work at ways that we can continue to work with Kansas State University to make sure that we have a strong town-and-gown relationship to economically grow our community together. One of those areas is to work on our continued efforts on the Edge District. Again, these are just a few of the opportunities that we face moving forward. Finally, I want to publicly thank many in our community who have supported my candidacy for this position. As I mentioned earlier, it has been a very humbling experience, and I'm so grateful for their support. So let's roll up our sleeves together and make a difference in the lives of those that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else, public comment is now closed. Commissioners, questions or comments? Nominations?
I'll start. First, I think it's fantastic that we've had such a turnout of people willing to do this, and I almost think we ought to appoint four or five new commissioners, but of course, we can't do that. That's not legal. I would, I think we need to support our mayor when she discussed the issues of putting this on the ballot, because it really, it's not a question of us not wanting representation. It's not possible to put a nonpartisan person on a ballot for a primary, so we couldn't do it in August. That leaves us to November, and the person would not take office until January. To ask someone to go through all the ramifications of running and panels and that kind of thing to serve for years is probably not fair to anybody. I think the one thing that's really hard for people to understand is that government is not business. I could no more take over the job of some CEO in business than many people, because you just can't step in. To say the same thing about people who are willing to say, "I can step in tomorrow at the city and be ready to go," is also very difficult. I know Susan started in July, in rain people, and I know that Peter and Susan and I, even though I've been around for 16 years doing this, we spent a lot of time in December and January, meeting with department heads, learning the ropes, learning how, talking to finance, these kinds of things. It's really a very complicated system, and while business acumen definitely helps you, it's not exactly the same as business, and you have to, you know, really think about all the various things that make up government and how you can really represent, and that's what we have represented, you know, how you can represent all the people, not all the people, but as many people as possible, in the decisions that you make, and you make them very clear. So I would like to nominate Linda Morse. Linda does represent Northview, which is often not under and usually not represented, and I think that's been one issue sometimes with some of our bond issues we've tried to pass, is people felt that that's all West Manhattan, you know? But we need to make sure we represent all of Manhattan. She's been very active in the social services. She's on the area agency board. She has been the lead vote getter in all the races that she has run, and she is the most conscientious commissioner, much more than I, in getting to things, in being involved in things, checking in with things at Fort Riley. I mean, I'm just always amazed that she says, "Well, I watched the Park and Recs Board," or "I've watched the planning board." You know, I kind of, as a commissioner, wait till they get to me and tell me what they said. But gosh, what a nice thing for so many wonderful people to come out and volunteer. And I expect to see you guys running next time, because we do need to have some new people, and I tried so hard to find people to run. I really, really shouldn't be here again. But when you have an election, one thing is you do get to hear people's personalities, and you do get to hear people's input, and not, you know, sometimes it seems those of us are running again and again and again the same questions, but you can build a picture of a person, and I'm always amazed how many people come to those panels. I'm not sure I ever did it when I wasn't running, but I just, I think Linda could step in easily. I think she's very well thought of throughout the community, and I would just really be happy to have her advice and interest back on the commission.
So I think something that's really important for us to consider, I mean, first, I would like for us to outlay the criteria that we are looking at for someone to fill this seat. You know, if we're not going to hold an election, we should at least be able to justify why we are nominating the people we are, or, you know, whoever is going to fill this seat. I think we need to at least share that with the public. And I lost my train of thought. Damn it. It's gone.
I can cut it.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, you know, I think it is important to have some sort of criteria. I think Karen laid out her criteria for why she picked the person that she did, and I do want to echo the comments in supporting the mayor, because the election would just be extremely difficult to do right now. I say lacking an election, the next best thing is to look to the last, which I did at the last meeting, look at the last election, when the person who would fall in line and is the next top vote getter by over 1,400 votes. It wasn't even close when you look at the difference between Mark and the next person in there. There was three of us, like at High 29, it's close to 3,100, 3,200. We were all clustered. So in the lack of being able to do an election, to go back to the one that was here just very recently, and especially because we didn't have a bunch of candidates all clumped together, where you're just seeing them separated by a couple of votes, it was a good chunk of votes that was between those two. So I've got one other for commissioner I may nominate, since I nominated the one I'm talking about before, unless someone wants to say, "Hey, if you do it, I'll give you a second." But, you know, that's my input on it.
I remember what I was going to say. I think it's important that we work to try and build a consensus. Karen and John, I respect your opinions and who you are trying to appoint. I think when we look at the dynamics of both of those people and our community, they both have a lot of very strong support, and they both have a lot of very strong opposition. And I think that if we appoint either one of them, it will not be viewed, it will be viewed as the least democratic because of that reason. I also think that democracy works both ways, and yeah, Mark did choose to run last year, and our community chose not to support him. And then as Linda chose not to run after years of very dedicated and fine service, that is also a signal to the community. So I really hope that the two of you may be able to come to a bit of a compromise so that we can, you know, I'd love for the vote to be four to zero. I don't know that that's going to happen, but I really would like to avoid having a bunch of two to two votes. So I really want to just ask that we please communicate with one another and try to come to a consensus on an appointment.
Oops, my turn. This is challenging. I hope you all appreciate that. To the person who questioned whether there was a standard operating procedure for how we do this, there actually is, and it lays out two options, holding an election, a special election, or making an appointment. And for the reasons that we indicated, of which cost is one element, but I think we've identified quite a few others, the commission has decided to appoint a candidate. I'd like to echo Karen's comments. It was tremendous to see the qualified people who reached out indicating that they were interested. Several of you mentioned that you had already been contemplating running in the next year. If you are not appointed tonight, I would heartily encourage you to do that. Continue to support that, to explore that notion. I would also encourage you to apply for openings on relevant boards as they come available. You have tremendous talent, and we could benefit from that talent. It's another way to broaden your base and to let people know about your decision-making skills, your creative thoughts. That said, I'm thinking about what to ask next.
Well, we can see if we have a second like we did.
Did you put forward a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to appoint Linda Morse as a commissioner to fill the existing, the current vacant seat through the period of the election next year? City clerk, we have Commissioner McCullough made a nomination of Linda Morse to fill this seat, and Commissioner Appel has seconded. Can you take the roll?
Commissioner Appel?
No.
Commissioner Mata?
No.
Mayor Adam Check?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Motion fails, two to two.
Okay, I'll throw this one out to get it out of the way. It's our other experienced commissioner recently. I did talk to Win Butler, and he would be willing to come back onto the commission. So much for decorum. The, obviously not as mayor on the law board, because we've already taken care of those positions. Getting a DUI is not a disqualifier for being on the commission. We've had them before. Also, he hasn't been convicted of the offense yet, but regardless, it's not a disqualifying factor. Not only was he on the commission last year, but is up to it for what, a week or two ago? So he's totally up to snuff with all of-